All right. Good evening, everybody. Today is April the 20th. I'd like to invite you all, or thank you all for joining us at the regular city council meeting for the City of Galt. Due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic emergency, we have to conduct to handle our city council meetings much differently than we usually do for the protection of the public and our city staff. I'm going to ask the city manager, Mr. Heinz, to give information to the public. Mr. Heinz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Manager Lorenzo Heinz, good evening. This meeting of the Galt City Council is being conducted by teleconference slash video conference in compliance with the state and county stay-at-home orders and as allowed by the Governor's Executive Order N-29-20, which allows for deviation of teleconference rules required by the Brown Act. Members of the public will see the council members and city staff who are appearing via remote video slash telephone connections. City council meetings will be held virtually by teleconference or by video conference only until further notice. Today's agenda states that rather than attending in person, residents may submit written public comments via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org prior to the council meeting. Any written comments that were received will be read out loud during the city council meeting by the city clerk on the appropriate agenda item, subject to the customary five-minute time limit, unless the same individual also appears and requests to speak live during the meeting. We will take the live comments first, and then the written comments will be read out loud. We are also using the Zoom webinar format, which allows the public to provide live public comment. Members of the public may use the link to enter the webinar as attendees. They should be able to use the raise their hand feature in the Zoom webinar to let us know if they would like to speak and should do so when the mayor announces the time for general public comment or when a specific agenda item is called if your comment concerns an item on the agenda. We request, as we typically do in person, that speakers to provide their name and address when they are called on to speak and their line is unmuted, but doing so is not required. Attendees should also see a lower hand feature if they change their minds and do not want to speak. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my comments. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Heinz. I will now call the meeting to order. Ms. Hubert, can you please take a roll call?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Yeah.
Councilmember Papino?
Here.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Here.
Councilmember Lozano?
Here.
Mayor Farmer?
Here. All right. If you'd now all join us in a silent prayer followed by flag salute. If everyone would please join us in a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Ms. Hubert, if you would please read our replay statement.
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, April 23rd at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, April 24th at 9:00 a.m. This meeting can also be viewed on Metro Cable 14's YouTube channel.
Thank you. Are there any agenda approval additions and/or deletions this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mayor and council, we are recommending that council, that the council continue the public hearing on item G1, the public hearing on the Corrillian Boulevard Corridor Plan, to the next regular meeting on May 4th at 6:00 p.m. At the virtual meeting Zoom link provided by, on the May 4th council meeting agenda. We are still resolving some issues surrounding this particular item. As such, we are recommending that the council continue the item to the May 4th meeting at 6:00 p.m., and we will need a motion, a second, and a roll call vote.
Okay. Do I have a motion to move the Corrillian Boulevard Corridor Plan public hearing to the May 4th meeting?
Make a motion to move it.
Moved by Councilmember Lozano.
By second.
By Councilmember Vandenberg. Ms. Hubert, a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Is there any other items to be pulled from the consent? Jay, you have your hand up. Is that a mistake?
No, that's correct. I think it's H3, the C Street Enhancement Project.
Well, that's, that is not on the consent.
Oh, sorry.
It's a regular, I'm so, okay. So it was a mistake?
Yep.
Okay. All right. There are no other items. We'll move on to item C, presentations. Do we have any presentations this evening, Ms. Hubert?
None this evening.
Okay. Thank you. We'll now move on to item D, public comment. Ms. Hubert, do we have any written public comment this evening?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the city council to receive comments, except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Due to the statewide emergency and social distancing guidelines, public comments may be submitted via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org and will be read out loud, subject to the customary five-minute time limitation. Also, members of the public may participate electronically via HTTPS colon forward slash And I do have one written comment on non-agenda items. There is no name. "I am against selling the flea market and putting in homes, hotels, strip malls, all for one sale. Cash that will be gone in a blink of an eye. Leave the baseball for the kids. There is nothing in Galt for kids to do. Why take the one thing they have? The Boys and Girls Club came and went, did not have the right people taking care of it. The money walked. Galt, does it off, does it offer a heck of a lot for the kids? The only thing here I see is kids running the street and games." That's all I have for written comments.
Okay. Thank you, Tina. Do we have any hands raised online, Rose?
We do have, excuse me, we do have a hand raised.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm gonna go ahead and allow Mr. Jerry Sauter. You have five minutes. Go ahead.
Hi. Good evening, members of the council, city staff. I just wanted to just provide a quick, brief thank you to Mayor Farmer. He recently did a podcast on social media and, as of late, has been very forthcoming with items concerning the community and things that will be on the agenda. I know several other council members have also expressed, making sure that the public is aware, but I thought that Mayor Farmer's podcast and answering questions from the community on some of the pressing issues that are facing Galt and decisions made by the city council was very, very informative. So I just want to say a big thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Sauter. Appreciate that. Do we have any additional hands raised?
We have no additional hands raised.
Okay. All right. Moving on to our next item E, reports by city council members on regional boards, commissions, and committees. We'll start with our Vice Mayor, Mr. Sandu.
Nothing to report tonight. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Papino?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Mr. Vandenberg?
Nothing to report.
All right. Councilmember Lozano?
As always, just real brief, I attended the SECOG Board Meeting last Thursday, and the highlight of the meeting, at least for us, was that the board unanimously approved the grants that our staff worked really hard on obtaining. And, you know, some of the issue, or the two grants, one is for, to do a study on Cost Road at the railroad crossing, looking at widening that and, and having, you know, more access to pedestrians and bicycles over in that area. And then the other one is on Walnut Avenue, kind of from, really from the fire station all the way down to East Stockton, different improvements, sidewalk improvements, bicycle lane improvements, and pedestrian crossing improvement there at Emerald Vista. And so, want to thank again staff, for, for our staff, for being diligent and really looking into what these opportunities will provide. And honestly, it's, grant money is tax money, and they did a really good job of bringing tax money back here so that we can, we don't have to take it out of our transportation fund or general fund to make, make these improvements. So I wanted to publicly thank Mr. Selling and his staff for what they do to, to make that happen. And really, that is, that is about it. I will, I will leave it at that and pass it on to the next person. Thanks.
Thank you for the updates. As for myself, I attended a youth commission, called Youth Commission, meeting on April the 12th, and I was, we're still looking for, I guess we're still soliciting applications for adult mentor, and we have some of our youth mentors that are going to be leaving, and we're looking for some replacement on those. We did talk about an upcoming, or they have an adoptive street for Lincoln Way, and so we discussed that, and they, we've been coordinating that to come up very soon. So looking forward to, you know, they're anxious to get back out in the community. We had some other business, can't remember anything that was significant other than that. And then, one other thing, not really commissioned, but I did attend, which as some of you did, the swearing-in ceremony on April 15th at the Police Department for our new officers, Officer Walters Herrera, and our new dispatchers Meyer and Marquez. And it was great to see the turnout. Whole department was there, from what I could tell, and a lot of city staff, council members were there. And I appreciate everybody showing up. It was a, was a really strong show of support for those new officers. So that is all I have on that. So we will move on to item F, which is our information consent calendar. It is recommended that items 1 through 9 be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion and/or action is requested by a council member. Item 1 is the minutes of the regular meeting of April 6th, 2021. Item 2, receive and file warrants for period ending April 7th, 2021. Item 3 is a treasurer's report for a period ending February of 2021. Item 4, which actually, skip that, that's a later item now, old agenda here. Item 5 is going to be Caterina Estates Project, second reading. Item 6 is the ordinance of the City Council of Galt authorizing the levy of special taxes in a community facilities district, including certain annexation territories identified as annexation number one, Veranda, into the City of Galt Community Facilities District 2021-1. Item number 7 is going to be ordinance of the City of Galt authorizing the levy of special tax in a community facility district, including a certain annexation territory identified as annexation number 2, Cordosa, into the Galt Community Facilities District 2021-1. And item number 8 is the same item, levy of special tax for the annexation territory identified as annexation number 3, Cedar Flats Estate, into the City of Galt Community Facilities District 2020-1. And lastly, item 9, the acceptance of the Ringo Road Railroad Crossing Improvements per the Development Impact Fee Credit Agreement with Elliott Homes Incorporated for the River Oaks 3C subdivision. I will entertain a motion for the consent calendar. Mayor? Yes, council member?
As previously noted, on other actions regarding the Veranda, I have a personal property within 500 feet of that development, so I will recuse myself from a vote on item number 5.
Item number 5. Okay. Thank you for that. So if I can receive a motion to approve items 1 through 9 excluding number 5, do I have a motion?
Move.
Moved by Vice Mayor Sandu.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Vandenberg. We have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
And again, that's noting for just items 1 through 4 and 6 through 8. And Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
And Mayor Farmer?
Item passes 5-0. I will now entertain a motion to approve item 5. Actually, I have it as item 5. Is it item 5 or 6 because there was a pull, item pulled out?
It's 5.
It's 5, okay.
And we, Harriet, didn't we discuss we could do one roll call vote noting that Councilmember Papino recused himself from 5?
Yes, we did do that, but once the mayor started, I thought you could, we'll just do it in two votes, but since it's still on the consent calendar, I think Mr. Papino can stay in the room.
Okay.
Okay. Do you need me to read item 5 again, or is it, okay, we go to the roll call?
I think you can go, if you have a motion, a second, you can just go to the, go to the roll call.
Okay. Did we get a roll, did we get a motion on, on item 5?
I move second.
Vice Mayor Sandu moves, seconded by Lozano. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Motion passes 4-0. All right. We'll now move on to, item G was pulled and moved to future meetings, so we'll proceed on to item H, regular calendar, city manager's office.
Can I interrupt you for a second? Could you please note that it was moved to May 4th because we want to move it to a date in, Corrillow to a date and time certain, so they don't, we don't have to renotice it?
Sure. Thought we did that and voted on at the beginning, we stated that, but I have no problem.
Okay. I just wanted to note that it wasn't moved to a, any old meeting, it was moved to a meeting on the 4th at 6:00.
Clarify, item G of, which is the Corrillian Boulevard Corridor Plan, and public hearing has been moved to the May 4th city council meeting. Is that correct?
Yes. Thank you.
All right. No problem. All right. We'll move on to item H, regular calendar from the city manager's office, is our coronavirus COVID-19 update. Mr. Heinz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the host, can I share my screen?
Give me one moment. It's all yours.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Can everyone see the PowerPoint?
Yes, sir.
Very good. All right. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I'm gonna present the COVID-19 update for April 20th, 2020. So we've got our cases, deaths for both SAC County and the City of Galt. These numbers are measured since our last council meeting on April the 6th. As you can see, the number of cases in Sacramento County has increased by 3% or 2,600 cases. The number of folks that we've lost in SAC County, SAC County, is 2%, has increased 2% as well, or 27. Here in the City of Galt, and this includes all the folks in the Galt zip code, we have 44 additional cases since the last council meeting, or an additional 2%. We have lost one additional person since our last council meeting, increasing the, the number of deaths by 2%. So the pandemic, although it's slowing down a bit, is still raging. Sacramento County remains in the red tier. There are nine new COVID cases per day, per 100,000. No change since our last meeting. We have a 3.5% positivity rate, which is slightly up from our last meeting, where it was 3.3. Greater Sacramento region ICU capacity is currently at 29.5% versus 27.8% on our prior meeting. The big news is on June 15th, 2021, California will fully reopen if two criterion are met. And the first criterion is if the vaccine supply is sufficient for Californians, for Californians 16 years and older who wish to be inoculated, and hospitalizations are stable and low, and specifically, hospitalizations among fully vaccinated individuals are low. So we're keeping our fingers crossed that we meet those two criterion, so we can reopen on the 15th. Galt's vaccination event originally planned for the week of 4/18 was postponed due to the CDC and FDA's recommendation, recommended pause in the use of the J&amp;J vaccine. This vaccine was linked to some rare physical ailments in folks that had received the vaccine, and that's why there was a pause. The vaccination event has been rescheduled for Saturday, April 24th, at 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Location is to be determined. We anticipate 1,000 to 1,500 Moderna vaccines have been allocated for this event. Final details and appointments will be released soon. Staff is coordinated with CSD to reschedule the mobile vaccination clinic, specifically focused on unsheltered, the unsheltered community and homebound seniors. It will be rescheduled to the week of 4/26. Details to follow. Vaccinate Sacramento, which is a webpage from Sacramento County, provides availability to the community, provides the community information on available vaccination sites, and so we recommend that our folks keep, stay vigilant and keep an eye on that site. We also have Vaccine Finder, which identifies clinics, pharmacies, and other locations offering COVID-19 vaccination. We have myturn.ca.gov, which contains appointments for mass vaccination sites coordinated by the state, i.e. Cal Expo, McClellan Park, and the Stockton Arena. Individuals 16 and older are now eligible to be vaccinated in California. Sacramento County recently extended the Galt COVID testing site through June 2021. 50% of all eligible Californians have received at least one dose of the COVID-19 vaccine. Sacramento County has administered over 855,000 doses of the COVID-19 vaccine, 500,000 partial vaccinations, and almost 350,000 full vaccinations. Our staff continues to work with Sacramento County and our community partners to ensure an equitable and safe vaccine distribution to the residents and community members of Galt. And Mr. Mayor and members of the council, that concludes my report for April 20th, 2021.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Heinz. Do we have any questions from the council on this particular item?
Mr. Vandenberg? It showed, over 300,000 full vaccinations. Is that two doses per person? So the actual total of doses given out is like 1,200?
I think it was 350,000 total vaccinations.
Right. But the full vaccinations, that means two injections?
That'll be 700 doses, I think.
700,000. Plus the other eight, 600 or whatever it was above.
Yeah.
Right. I think that's, that's a correct assertion, Councilmember Vandenberg.
Thank you. So just some clarification, Mr. Heinz. So the, the vaccination that was rescheduled for this weekend is not the mobile vaccination that was canceled. You're referring to the vaccination that was supposed to happen on the 18th, and it's being rescheduled to this weekend. Is that correct?
Yes, that's the case. If you, we want to discuss the details, I'm gonna ask our Parks and Rec Director, Armando Solis, to address your question.
Yes, we've been able to reschedule both the mobile vaccines for our targeted areas for our seniors. I was able to talk to CSD, and they will provide a walk-in for us, a walk-in event for our seniors also, for those who do not live within the nine targeted areas. And this is different from what we're doing on Saturday, which will be done with La Familia. We're in talks, we talked today at 4 o'clock, whether we're gonna do a walk-in or a drive-through, that will be determined tomorrow, and we'll be able to send out more information on that. That's why the TBA on the, where it's gonna be.
So where should folks be watching closely for the information on the address, on the city's webpage and social media, or?
Yes, we're gonna be putting on our webpage and through social media, once they put together the site with the location, and that should be out by tomorrow afternoon.
Okay. If you could please?
For the, I'm sorry, for the mobile vaccines, we're taking that information, and we've already forwarded it to CSD.
Okay. If you could, I mean, I'll watch for it on social media for the one this weekend, for the address, but if you could maybe let the council members know as a whole, so that all of us that, you know, could share it if we would prefer to do, you know, to help get the word out on the address, being that we're coming on that pretty quick, so that'd be great. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Solis. I have one more question about the vaccine, I forget what it was. So just to clarify, because I've had some seniors ask me about their concerns with the pause in the Johnson-Johnson, the reschedule of the, the rescheduling of the mobile is, neither of these events are gonna be using the Johnson, that's, that is currently still on pause, is that correct?
Correct. We have pivoted to Moderna on both, for the mobile and either walk-in or drive-through.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Councilmember Lozano, you have a question?
I do. The one for this weekend, the event for this weekend, is that gonna be appointment-driven or drop-in?
It will be appointment-driven. And then what we're hoping to do, if we have extra appointments toward the end, do a first come, first serve those open spots for people that didn't show up and take the appointments.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions on this item? No? Okay. Do we have any written public comment on this item? Tina?
No public comment.
Okay. Rose, do we have any hands raised online on this item?
We currently have no hands raised.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Then we will move on to our next item, which is gonna be item 2, the body worn and in-car cameras. Agenda report's gonna be being presented by our interim police chief, Mr. Kelenowski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. And if you give me a moment here to share my screen. And hopefully you can see the PowerPoint.
Yes, we can see it.
Thank you. Good evening. Brian Kelenowski with the Police Department, and as many of you know, the use of body worn cameras and the need for transparency and accountability has been a hot topic throughout the nation since before 2014, when we first learned of some high-profile incidents that have occurred. In 2015, the federal government released a 21st Century Policing Initiative, and I thought it important to review that with council, because many of the decisions made in law enforcement are based still on this document. And it was, that document and work was designed to identify best policing practices and offer recommendations on how those practices can promote effective crime reduction while building public trust. And within that document, you see the six pillars that were identified. For those only listening, and I'll repeat those, which are building trust and legitimacy, policy oversight. Policy oversight, technology and social media, community policing and crime reduction, training and education. And officer safety and wellness. Locally, you've probably seen us engage in many of those different levels of engagement, um, and those are all based on that initiative. I will say, in California, we tend to be ahead of the curve on what's going on nationwide. So many of the things that were recommended in this document were already ongoing here in the city of Galt. And that takes us to body worn cameras. And so why body worn cameras? So the use of the body worn cameras, as you can see, can contribute to improving police practices, building community trust and legitimacy. The use of body worn cameras and different studies that have been done have shown to reduce the number of complaints received and the uses of force. Uh, needed. There is a reduction in time to review potential complaints because we do have video to review. Um, of different activities that occur, which we currently don't have the benefit of having. It allows for the review of critical incidents and it allows uh management staff to identify any training gaps. Provides the opportunity for de-escalation, allows for better evidence gathering and provides for an overall better officer safety program. The ability to review footage from the perspective of the officer is important in analyzing the appropriateness of the actions taken. Currently, the Galt Police Department does not utilize any form of body worn cameras or in-car camera systems. And that takes us to um our selection and our request to use our vendor Axon. Axon offers the ability for automatic camera activation, not only when a handgun gun is drawn, but also when the taser is activated. Uh, the taser is an Axon product, so the Bluetooth technology allows for that activation. And there's currently no company that we considered that allowed for both. In addition, the body worn program will auto activate cameras in the area of a body worn camera activation. So if I'm the first officer on scene or if I activate and my partners have not had the opportunity to activate, the automatic activation will occur. This includes the vehicle cameras, assuming the vehicles are within range. The vehicle cameras uh will activate when the light, overhead lights are activated or in the case of a collision. They could also be customized to address a certain speed criteria. And if we activate our gun locks in the vehicle for either our less lethal or our patrol rifles. Axon has real-time GPS capability. We have that currently in our vehicles with our computers, but the body worn camera itself. Allows us to track the location of an officer should we need to in a critical incident where they have separated themselves from their vehicle like in a foot pursuit or other issue. Uh, this uh program also gives us the ability to have a critical incident real-time viewing from a remote location. That includes dispatch supervisors if they happen to not be on scene for some particular reason or command staff. Uh, in addition, Axon refreshes their body worn camera equipment for the body worn cameras, not the cars, but the body worn cameras at the two and a half year mark. And the five-year mark, and that's important because it ensures that the officer is equipped with the most up-to-date technology available. And that our equipment is not stale and is responsive to our needs. Uh, and then furthermore, the database access through evidence.com for the District Attorney's Office is already in place with other agencies, specifically the Sacramento Police Department. And the Sacramento Sheriff's Office. So for us implementing this program on that platform is something that can be accommodated by the District Attorney's Office. And staff has reached out to them and confirmed that. For those who don't know, um, the body worn cameras uh. Obviously record video, audio, and it gives us the ability to take still photos. Earlier, I referenced, you know, the ability to collect better evidence. Obviously, from the officer's perspective or other officers on scene, we can record real-time what's happening with the individual or individuals we're dealing with. Those making filing decisions or in the court can get a better perspective beyond a written report of the actions or the issue before the officer. All this information will be uploaded into a uh cloud-based system that is maintained by Axon. They have redundancy across the nation on multiple locations. Um, this cloud-based system prevents the city from having to host that information on our servers. And again, gives us the ability to access um this data at remote locations. And like I mentioned before, the District Attorney's Office being able to use evidence.com. Give me one second here. I'm gonna make sure I don't repeat myself too many times. Um, the patrol vehicle cameras specifically are equipped with two cameras, the first being a forward-facing and the second a rear-facing for the in custody or the cage area of the vehicle. So that gives us the ability to have um active monitoring of the backseat area when we have an in custody. And then, of course, everything in view uh in front of the officer in the vehicle. In addition, uh, to the GPS that I mentioned. Uh, and the camera, camera activation to the sergeants or the supervisors, excuse me, in the dispatch center is a thing that they have, a thing. That's poor techn, poor terminology. It's a program that they have for a gunshot alert activation. Where if there is a alert for gunshots, there's an automatic activation for the supervisors, supervisors and dispatch. And an example of that would be um in the case of something like an officer ambush. So timelines. And there's a couple of things I need to cover here because I haven't talked about the staffing and other equipment needs that we've talked about in the staff report that council has seen. But I wanna cover timelines and then exit this PowerPoint. Because I don't wanna give you death by PowerPoint, so I can see you when I'm talking. Um, the equipment we expect to be shipped in early July. First, the camera, body worn cameras will be deployed, followed by the in-car cameras. Um, during this process, as noted in the staff report, we have met with the Galt Police Officers Association. And agreed with the association that we would work collaboratively on policy and procedures. To ensure that we address any concerns that staff has regarding this program. We are not an early adopter of this program by any means. So most of that policy and procedure should already be duplicated in other agencies throughout the state and the nation, for that matter. Um, the position conversion, which I'll talk about in a minute, just so you have the timelines, will also occur by this July, July timeline. And we envision that being open to current city employees. I'm gonna stop my um share here so I can get back on the screen. As I mentioned about staffing, the body worn camera program requires specific oversight and maintenance of the data that's collected. And the department anticipates, as noted in the staff report, significant increases in data requests, not only from a criminal component with the District Attorney's Office. But in um California Public Records Act request. So we anticipate significant work launching this program. And that's why we are going to be asking the council to approve a conversion of one of our vacant dispatcher positions that's in Measure R. To the Administrative Analyst One Two. We've identified, I have with uh HR, that this job description aligns with the duties and tasks necessary for the general operations of this body worn camera program. How we got to taking the dispatcher position and converting that is specifically back in twenty sixteen, before we did some reclassification work citywide. The city looked at this. The dispatchers were co-classified as dispatcher CSOs. And in that staffing survey, that in that classification, they took that CSO designation away. And by virtue of that, um, really up-staffed my dispatch center to nine dispatchers plus a supervisor. Based on our current population, calls for service and workloads, the nine dispatchers plus a supervisor is more than is needed in the dispatch center. And in an attempt not to um overspend or not use our funding judiciously. We're gonna take that dispatcher position. We feel that could be better used as the analyst position. Uh, we discussed this at length with the Galt Police Department Civilians Association, their president and vice president. They concurred with our approach and indicated, and I would tell you that, of course, in the future, as Galt grows, we will revisit the need for that dispatcher position when the time is right. There are some other operating costs that we're requesting. Um, and the first and foremost is we think there's some workspace issues we need to address. And we've identified an estimated cost for um computer printer and different things, estimated to be about four thousand dollars. And then in addition, an interface with our records management system, which is Sunridge Systems, our RIM system. Um, that contract with um with that group is thirty-two hundred dollars a year, so we'd be requesting um the funds for that interface. And then lastly, in discussions with the POA, um, we uh. Determined that in order to get the best use out of our body worn cameras. Uh, we needed to ensure that each of the officers was equipped with their own smartphone. Currently, we have a number of smartphones in the department that are pool smartphones. But this program requires tethering to an individual smartphone and we don't have enough um. When we have full staffing or overlap, overlap shifts or special events. So part of this program requests the funding for the first-time cost of the purchase of that smartphone to supplement what we already have. And then the um. Program cost for that through um AT&amp;T. It's a first net product. And uh, the first year cost for that is fifteen thousand dollars. We anticipate moving those cell phone voicemail boxes to the officer's primary voicemail box and dumping our landline voicemail box. So there will be some savings in out years, but we haven't identified that total savings yet. But our first year cost is estimated to be about fifteen thousand dollars for the smartphones and associated equipment. Um, in the staff report, and we talk about funding, a majority of this funding is coming from Fund uh forty-seven. Which is Measure R with a small amount coming from. NCC SIF, our insurance pool, our self-funded, self-funded insurance pool. There is a fund, they're funded about eighteen thousand dollars that we have not yet spent. And we need to spend that money and we need to have a body worn program in order to spend future funds out of that fund. So we will offset some of these first year costs with that eighteen thousand one hundred and eighty dollars being provided by NCC SIF. The total cost for the first year all funds is two hundred and thirty-seven thousand one hundred and ninety dollars. And that is what's recommended for council to approve. There is information in the staff report about Galt Municipal Code Section three point four zero point one four zero, which I'm sure council may ask legal about. But it authorizes the use of Measure R, special sales tax revenues for various police services. And expressly including uh purchasing police equipment, what this obviously is. And there's some ongoing uh information in there that finance provided us. Indicating that we have the fund balance necessary to take on this first year's. Uh, request of funds, the overall five-year fund request of four hundred ninety-six thousand dollars for the five-year cost for um Axon. Due to um increased revenues and um a lack of sort of expenditures based on vacancies and unspent funds. So with that, that's my initial presentation. I'm sure there's gonna be many questions from council that I will attempt to um answer. Late this afternoon, I was able to get ahold of Axon, who agreed to sit on this meeting if necessary for any questions that I may not be able to answer. That may be more um in the IT world. Because uh quickly, we will get out of my lane in that regard, so um if there's something that I can't answer, I can ask Axon to jump on. So with that, I submit the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Kalanowski, and thank you to, is it Tom? If from my side. Yeah. Thank you for doing that. We had a late days conversation and I had asked if there was gonna be somebody there and you said there wouldn't be, but I appreciate going the extra mile and having them here. It could, it could pose to be useful. So I will start questions with um council. We'll go around the horn here and we'll start with our Vice Mayor, Mr. Sandu. Do you have any questions on this particular item?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, do you wanna be public comment before?
Public comment first. Would the council prefer we do public comment first? Rich, Jay, Kevin, okay. All right. Do we have any written public comment on this item, Ms. Hubert?
Uh, no written comment.
Okay, Rose, do we have any hands raised online?
We do. I'm gonna go ahead and allow Michael Little. Do unmute your, unmute your mic and you have five minutes.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Councilmembers, city leaders. For those who don't know me, my name is Michael Little. I'm the current president of the Galt Police Officers Association, or otherwise known as GPOA. Uh, tonight, as you have just heard, you have a proposal for body worn cameras and dash cameras. Body worn, body worn cameras and vehicle-mounted cameras are now a norm in the law enforcement industry. In fact, Galt Police Department is one of the last agencies in the region to start using body worn cameras. The use of body worn cameras not only creates an even greater level of transparency, but also holds both parties more accountable for their actions. In today's world, a few seconds, few second clip from a cell phone can form opinions and conclusions without any facts. Allowing our members to utilize body worn cameras will allow the department to release actual video and audio from incidents to the public to show the factual events of any given incident. Policing in America in twenty twenty-one is quite different from even just a few years ago. Part of the change, and rightfully so, is to be as transparent as possible. I look forward to growing the bond and trust with our great community by implementing the use of these cameras, both on our officers and vehicles. You utilizing Axon systems for purchase, for this purchase, not only allows for our officers to be equipped with the best equipment out. But also allows the city to have the valuable assistance built into the cloud-based storage system. Axon also offers a tremendous amount of add-ons such as unmanned aerial vehicles, UAVs or drones. Automatic license plate readers, an ability to livestream camera from the field to a remote command center to uh have decisions made in a more efficient way. Overall, it allows for a smaller agency like ours to operate at a safer and more efficient level. I, along with the Galt Police Officers Association representatives, have met with the police administration. Uh, speaking with Chief Kalanowski and Lieutenant Small, I'm excited and grateful for the opportunity to collaborate on creation of the policies which will be implemented for the use of these body worn cameras. With the city council's blessing, a vote for purchase of the camera system from Axon will boost, boost the police department to being even closer to the now expected industry standard. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Little. We appreciate those comments. Do we have any additional hands raised online, Rose?
No other hands raised.
Okay, and no, still no written, no emails?
No.
We will entertain emails coming in. If someone's watching and they would like to email a comment on the subject, you're more than happy to send something in before we uh conclude this, this item. So we will go back and start with council comments. Uh, we'll start with our Vice Mayor, Mr. Sandu, please go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Give me the opportunity. Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank you. Uh, Mr. Chief, uh, Mr. Kalanowski, uh, bring that report or bring that agenda item to front of the council. And this uh in a report is very detailed, report is very transparent, like a report. Uh, the, I maybe have a, you know, just for the clarification, few comments. Uh, first of all, you know, this body worn camera, in-car cameras. I believe in, I believe the body worn camera could be more transparency and accountability. Transparency and accountability is a big discussion throughout the nation and we see every day. And I also believe this body worn camera are the beneficial for the department and the beneficial to the public. Uh, I, I, I like that agenda item bring to the council. And the most other important thing, any employee, especially this department is very important department for the city. Anybody, they need to work, they need the tools. This is the tool they can use for the transparency, for the accountability, and that's very important to me at this time I'm looking at. Uh, the other thing is, I was very much happy on the, on the report and I just want a clarification from the chief. Uh, you know, I wanna make sure Galt Police Management working with the, with these. Uh, Galt Police Associations. And I see on the report, I just wanna make sure, confirm it, because this anything implementation, they already communicate. And I believe, uh, uh, Mr. uh, Klassi, you already communicate with the, the president, right? That's what.
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor, that is correct. We've committed to work with the POA. Um, that was the genesis for the request regarding the uh smartphones. And um, we know that the success of this program is based on um the collaborative approach. Um, with the POA so that we have buy-in and um consistency in its use. So um, everybody I've talked to in the organization um is optimistic about the program. And um, we're excited about uh the opportunity to move forward.
Thank you. And then my next just a clarification on the report, uh, I, I, I'm looking. I'm looking at, we have, we're going to convert one of the position from the dispatching to the analyst. And I just want to make sure you communicate with Galt Police Civilian Association. You know, when the position modified or changed, we're going to make sure, you know, is, is these, you know, association are understand why we are made and they had, there is room to improve. I does not personally cut down any position. Absolutely, is, is, is these associations are. But you know, you communicating with them, there is a report there. Also, I just want to make sure the clarification on that.
Yes, and we will continue to evaluate the staffing and workloads. Because we do not want to burn our staff out and we don't want to compromise those first responders on the phone. So we've committed to Laura Satello, who's the President and Valerie Homan, who's the Vice President in the meeting I had with them, that if the need for the ninth position needed to come back, that I would work with City Hall to address that issue. So we did some work on that and comparing other sized cities. It's my sense that when we get to somewhere in the range of 32,000 to 35,000 population in this city, there will be the need for additional dispatch staff in the building. But if we staff those eight positions with that supervisor, we will have adequate staffing to do our jobs in the short term. And I don't see the need in the next five year period for adding that additional staffing, unless something unforeseen occurs. And I don't see epic growth occurring and I don't see epic crime waves occurring in the community where our call volume is going to go up because it's been steady over the last five years.
Thank you. And then my last question, just a clarification, I know as a police management, you guys approach to the different camera system. And when you approach to the different camera system, you're looking what our needs are and what our quality, what the reputation of these companies. Can you might be explain me in a brief, why you choose to Axon and a little bit might be if you have another company, you already discussed with them, why you're not choosing the other company or?
So in our evaluation, which frankly has gone on for several years, we've had fits and starts with body worn cameras for at least the last four or five years that I can think of, where we've evaluated different camera systems. For us, the ability for the automatic activation of all weapons, so that was your handgun, which other systems offer. But the activation of that taser and the automatic activation of that body worn camera is important for us because I did not want to get into a place where sometimes the camera activates, but sometimes it doesn't, you know, on certain pieces of equipment and not others. So this ensures that the first priority for the officers, if they're transitioning through uses of force from a taser to a handgun, we haven't missed a piece of that incident when only, let's say the taser was deployed, but the camera wasn't activated. Also, as Officer Little indicated, Axon brings other opportunities for this organization, specifically a drone program, which we don't have, that they offer. And evidence.com has other potential future uses for us where, for example, although we have not purchased that product yet, there would be the ability for the community to upload videos directly into evidence.com on our behalf. We're not going to go there yet, but there are those abilities to do that. And then lastly, Axon, in my opinion, has been aggressive about changing or improving its software abilities. We're going to be using the Body 3 camera, which is the most, you know, up to date newest product that they have. We're using Fleet 2 for the in-car cameras. But they, at the end of this year, will be launching Fleet 3. And the difference between Fleet 2 and Fleet 3, in addition to having the ability to have more cameras with Fleet 3, is that you can add or have the ability to have the license plate reader program available to you. So we have that on some of our vehicles, but this would allow all vehicles to have the ability, at least in the front facing, if we're only doing two cameras, the ability to do license plate reading. So I just felt like, and I don't even feel like, I know, talking to my counterparts and other agencies that I would call this the gold standard and it gives us the ability to build for the future. So that's why working with Lieutenant Small and myself and former Chief Sockman, this was the platform we were most interested in. So I hope I answered your question, but that's, that's the reasons for our decisions.
Yeah, thank, thank you for all the clarification.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're off, Sean.
All right. Councilmember Papinow.
Thank you. And thank you, Chief, for the very detailed presentation. And I'm not going to be redundant with what the Vice Mayor asked and commented on and everything you presented as to the benefits, needs and values of the systems. It is the industry standard and I would venture to say in California, if there's an agency two, three years down the road from now that doesn't have this technology, would probably be considered negligent, both by the community and by the officers and be subject to some illegal action. So I'm glad to see that we're moving forward. I'm glad to see that you, as you noted, we're not the first one doing this in the last 28 years. From the inside, I've seen law enforcement go from zero technology to where we are now, including that very mumpy road when this first started. Primarily concerns with privacy rights and concerns of employee groups as to how management will use the technology. So I'm pleased to see the cooperative work between both the administration and both associations and the not reinventing the wheel, if you will, and working with the lessons learned. And as you say, going with, with the gold standard. And I do believe that you've chosen the state of the art equipment. So I do not have any questions about it and I will pass it on to the next council member.
Thank you, Councilor Papinow. Councilmember Vandenberg.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief Kalanowski, for looking at all aspects of this financially and how it affects different parts of the community and police departments itself. I just have one question. How does, I realize that we're what, the amount of money we're taking out of measure R, and I don't have a problem with that, but how does that affect the fund balance moving forward?
So I will pitch this to Claire, who did a lot of work to help me out on this. And so I think she has the best information. Obviously she watches the checkbook, so.
Yes, I do. So currently the fund balance is, is pretty high. We've made attempts over the last few years to spend one time money using measure funds for the police department, but because of vacancies that occur in all of the police department, including measure R, we really haven't dug into that fund balance. So there's a portion of this first year that is ongoing costs. We don't have any concerns about that causing any kind of problems to the ongoing financial balance. The fund balance is ample to support the one time costs in this proposal.
Maybe I could frame that question a little differently.
Okay.
Right now, there's 1.3, a little over 1.3 million in measure R and you're going to use a little over 200,000 in years. So that puts it just over a million in years two, three and four. Is that going to be under a million, under a half million? Because we keep pulling out of it or is it basically to, you know, stay even?
Based on this proposal and this program, we don't anticipate that this will draw down the fund balance anything further than that first year.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Lozano.
Yeah. And truly in the interest of being redundant, I will be short. I do want to thank Chief Kalanowski for answering all of my questions, both offline chatting as well as tonight. One of the concerns I had was I wanted to ensure that whatever in internal in information, information technology needs that they had as it relates to the network or anything like that, that we're taking care of. But it sounds like it's going to be cloud based and so we'll be good there. I just have a couple of things and for full disclosure, I did have quite a lengthy meeting with Officer Little, the president of P O A, over the weekend about this subject. And so a lot of, a lot of my decision making comes from that, that conversation. I'm excited that the P O A is on board and, and is excited about being a part of the policy discussion. I think that's important. And, and, and I think that we're not finally, but, but this is a huge step of providing our officers the tools they need to do their job to protect, protect themselves as well as the community. And I'm excited about that. Finally, I'll just say, I mean, other than MDTs in a car, this is bringing technology to our officers. I think it's awesome. So just a couple of points I wanted to make. One of the things is, you know, we talk about transparency and accountability and the, the what, what I think the public and maybe even our staff here or colleagues may, may believe is that is account, accountability and transparency of officers' conduct. And I want to, I want to just put another perspective on that. I think it's also transparency and accountability for our community. Officers work every day, day in and day out. And I'll tell you, our officers are very fortunate to work in Galt because we have some awesome community members that are very supportive. But also this is, in my opinion, transparency and accountability of the public. When they make accusations about officers, we will have the technology to either support that claim or you know, take, take a little bit less time investigating something that may or may not be accurate. And I only say that because I've been involved in situations where complaints have come forward that were either exaggerated or totally untrue. And it provides a lot of stress for officers. So when we talk about accountability and transparency, it is for officer conduct, but also it's for the conduct of the community. I think that a couple of just real quick points, more points is body worn cameras and in car cameras. At least my perspective is, is that it doesn't always give you the exact, you know, 360 degree view of an incident that occurs. And so I think the community's expectation should be that body worn camera is going to give you whatever view you, it's going to give you. Remember that officers, that camera is not going to have the officer's peripheral vision recorded. And, and some of those other things they may hear or see that is out of view of camera. Hopefully other cameras are there to pick it up, but, but just know that that at least is something to consider when this, when this happens. And so it's, you know, it's, it just, it provides a different perspective. And then lastly, I think the collection of evidence is really, really important here. I mean, this could be the difference between time, less time spent in court, things like that. And so for at least the, the evidence piece, I think that that's important. And it's also important to remember that, you know, officers still have to write reports. The camera's not going to catch everything and, and they have to, that's, that's part of the evidence collection process. And so I'm excited about this. I, I, I thank you, Chief Kalanowski, for bringing this forward. At this point, I'm excited that the officers, the Peace Officers Association leadership is going to be involved in it or has been involved in it, quite honestly. And, and I think it's a big morale boost for, for our folks that are here. So thank you for that. I will leave, leave it to other council members. Actually, I think just the mayor's left. And so, but I would like the opportunity to move the item once we're ready. Thanks.
I, I will, I will give you that courtesy, Mr. Lozano. So again, not to try to reiterate what, what a lot of my councilmembers have said, they've all touched on points that, you know, that I'm sure we all think alike when it comes to subjects like this. Just some quick, you know, I'm sure we, I too had conversations with our chief this afternoon and our city manager and and in also had some conversations with some other agencies who I have contacts with. And there you actually using Axon, you know, I wanted to find out more about the product. And they are, like you said, they are the gold standard, it appears in the industry. And so I had another agency I talked to that they said that they actually were using something different and they transitioned to Axon recently. So you know, regardless of the P O, the GPOA, you know, when I, when I, when I met with Officer Little as well, the president of the, of the, you know, obvious, obviously all the council members wanted to talk to the officers because we want to get a feel from the inside of the department, how they feel about this. And I too was pleasantly surprised on how, you know, supportive they were of it. You know, and, and the side of it, I think that a lot of people pay attention to is it's not about just recording an incident. It's when you know you're on camera, you tend to want to be more professional. Because you know you're being held to a higher standard, so to speak. And I think that the people that are being on camera, if you, if they're taking a statement from somebody or a witness or somebody's reporting something and they know they're being recorded, they, they know their cognizance of that, I think. So I think it really goes a long way beyond just, we're going to record an incident for evidence. So with that said, I did have a couple of technical questions and, and Mr. Kalanowski answered lots of them this afternoon, but I had a couple just because we have our gentleman from Axon here. So I have a little bit of network background. So I know, you know, the strength of a network is only as weak as, is only as strong as its weakest link. So could you tell me just briefly, without, you know, boring us with a lot of, or the audience with a lot of technical stuff? I just was curious about the redundancy. I know in your contract, it talks about using third party cloud storage and which means, you know, it's not going to be you guys, but you guys subcontract that. Could you tell me briefly about the strength of that and the, and the redundancy that you have in that, Mr., is it man?
Sure is, Mayor. Sure is. Thank, thank you very much. And first, just let me, let me thank you for allowing me to participate tonight, Mayor, City Manager Heinz and the rest of the council members. So I can assure you, there's over 8,000 agencies that are on the Axon platform around the country and now around the world. We use Microsoft Azure, which is by far separated itself as the most secure platform for cloud based storage. Everything that we're doing with Axon is all encrypted until it reaches evidence.com. So unbelievably secure, CIGIS compliant to the highest FBI level.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. So i- is it, and also the, has there been any instances where, because one concern of mine was, because we, I don't know if you're aware of this, but we recently had you know, ransomware attack in the city of Galt, which was, you know, really hit our, our IT infrastructure really hard. And I'm sure you guys, you know, being the reputation that you have, you guys you know, on point with that. But I just, I just concern myself, you know, by reading through your contract, which was like, you know, 47 pages, I think it was pretty lengthy. I see normal stuff in there where if this happens, we're not responsible for that and so on and so forth. But I just worry that, um, so the docking stations are going to be at the station where each, you know, each officer comes in and they, they dock their cameras. That, that, is there going to be some internal peripherals or something that you guys are going to put in place? Like, are you guys going to set up like a separate V LAN or something on the network that exists, police department that you guys operate off of? Or are you going to be piggybacking on the stuff that we have in our house?
So yeah, that's a great question. So we'll definitely be piggybacking off what you have. Each agency is a little bit different. But like I said, everything is completely secure, CIGIS compliant. Everything on the body cameras is encrypted until it's actually uploaded to evidence.com. So even if somebody got a hold of a body camera, they, they couldn't see anything unless that camera was linked to that account in evidence.com.
Okay. And then next is a training question and, and the, the chief did answer this earlier, but I wanted to just touch on it for the sake of the audiences. So you actually will come in and train the trainers. So you'll, you'll, your staff will come in and train someone internally and then our internal person will be the one who's the person that trains our officers, however long that takes and is the, is the, and the any, any, any ongoing updates with software or hardware or whatever, that person, I'm assuming that person would be, would be retrained or updated on those things? That person, I'm, I'm assuming that person would be, would be retrained or updated on those things?
Yes. So the first part of your question there, we have pro services reps that are Axon reps. They fly out to the agency on the day of deployment. They spend the entire day doing body camera training, evidence.com training. There is, as you asked about, Train the Trainer segment. So any officers that can't make the live session, those individuals that from command staff would be able to train those officers as well as future officers. So what we really want to do is just ensure that it's an extremely smooth deployment. And then I'm sorry, what was the, what was the second part of the question there?
Was that if there's any software, I read a lot about if there's software upgrades or hardware.
Thank you. Yep. So one of the other things is, once you come on board with Axon, you're assigned a dedicated account manager. That manager is your go to agency point of contact. They will know the agency like the back of their hand. So they'll be there for any future training, any future needs, any software updates, anything like that. We're going to ensure that that's all done. And most of those updates, most of those firmware updates are done automatically. It's not anything manually that you have to do. Just when those firmware updates are rolled out, the very next time an officer docks their camera, it's automatically updated.
Okay. And then last thing, which I, Chief could have answered, but I guess you can, since I got you on is. There, there was, there was a brief discussion about how they operate and things and. Although the, there was mentioned about the camera, the in car camera activating when, when someone's either at a certain, when the car is either at a certain speed or. Or when they go, you know, lights and sirens. That, that doesn't mean, I mean, there's their ability to, for the officer to actually activate the camera beyond those circumstances. Manually?
Most definitely. So it's a double click of the body camera and the same thing with the in car camera. The in car camera has Axon View, which is our software component that'll be on there. So with, just to touch the screen, we can also activate the in car cameras. But with the signal activation. In, in most cases, the body camera is automatically activated.
Okay. And then the cameras too, then this isn't, they're not just, the body cameras are not just, I mean, there was talk. That they're automatically, you know, activated when, when the taser is pulled or firearm. But, but, you know, the, the officer has a discretion if he's, if he's having a conversation with someone, he can activate that camera just. Just to record a conversation, doesn't have to be in an instance where there's being. A force used or something, right? I just want to clarify that for people that are watching.
Most definitely. So it's a simple double click of the body camera to activate the body camera at any time.
Okay. All right. Well, I appreciate this answer. I just trying to, you know, I think. People are fascinated with how this stuff works and this is new technology to our community. So I think I just would wanted to kind of flush out some of those. Interesting things about the system that maybe people are wondering. So. Thank you, Tom, for your time here tonight. I appreciate you last minute, making yourself available. So I only have a couple of last questions, which are for staff. One is, and. Our Mr. Vandenberg touched on it briefly. You know, this is coming from measure our money and I, I want to remind people just for those that are not. Familiar with, you know, measure R is, is a sales tax, a special tax bond that, that you, you guys pass. This isn't a golf. In two thousand and eight. So this is your money at work. This is your half cent tax that only golf pays. For this particular thing, this is your, your tax money at work. This is what we do with this funds and, and I think it's important that you all understand that, that the power of. Things like that and what they can do for the community when it may not otherwise been possible. But I have a question about measure R. If, if actually Mr. Conowski or Claire could answer. Two fold. One is, was this ever presented? Just as a heads up, I know that they're not policymakers, but. I, I would assume, or maybe I'm wrong, that you guys briefed the, the measure our committee that you are going to be bringing this to council at some point. Just so they were, because they are the oversight committee. I mean, I'm sure they were knowledgeable of that.
If the, if this is approved this evening, they have a meeting on the twenty eighth of this month and this will be provided to them.
Okay. Well, I get that. I was just more like. Because their oversight, I mean, once the council proves it, you know, it, it doesn't really matter what they think. I was just wondering if they were giving up like a, a heads up. And saying, hey, this is something that we're going to be doing. I was just curious if that was. Ever done or if it was policy. I'm not saying it should have been. I just ethically, I feel like it may should have been. I'm just, I just a question.
Want to handle that since it's a program update?
Mister, Mister Mayor. Typically, we, we try to present the significant policy issues to the council first. Because this is the, the ultimate body for policy decisions in the, in this, in the city. Once we get the council's buy in, we will brief the measure our committee. As to this program, I imagine members of that committee are, are watching tonight. And. And so we will be sure to brief those folks, but typically we bring this issue directly to. The council because of its significant and because its significance and its citywide impact. And that's why we're bringing it to you first. And that's typically our policy with all commissions and committees. We, we like to bring it to you all first and then we'll brief the commissions and committees. I don't foresee that the measure our committee will have an issue with this. And given the council's standing in relation to the other committees and commissions, I don't think that the measure our committee will. Have an issue with us bringing it to you first.
Yeah, and I, and I, I don't think, I'm pretty confident they don't have a problem with it either, but I'm just. And I don't want to dig into this question too much, but I just want to. Say that it's actually not exact. So, you know, things come to the planning commission before they come to us. They actually come to a lot of commissions before they come to us. That's kind of how it works. So with, in the spirit of oversight, oversight is actually where, you know, they are the citizens oversight on, on that money. So. I just, you know, was almost like. For future reference, you know, we'd be kind of like, you know, hey, we presented this to the measure our oversight, you know, because they are the oversight on the money. You know, they gave their blessing on it. They thought it was a great idea. It's kind of nice to know that because. You know, they are the oversight. They are our eyes and ears on that. I think for us to approve something, which again, I don't think they're going to have a problem with it. And clearly tonight looks, you know, looks like we're in full support of this and I. Support it as well. But I, I think that it's kind of. Almost pointless if we approve it and then you go back and say, hey, by the way, I measure our oversight people, we, we did this. So. I mean, it kind of defeats the purpose of oversight. I don't want to kick that subject, but this maybe can continue another time, but I just want to state. That I feel like the measure R is a little bit different than any other thing we got going on with other commissions and committees. It's, it's an oversight. Not just some, you know, whatever committee that's meant to whatever. So with my last question with that, I just. And if you can't provide this for me right now, that's fine. You can get back to me, but I just wanted, just for my own knowledge and for the council. If we could maybe get an updated list of where we stand with the positions like. Which positions exist in measure R? Like if you have two officers and three dispatch or wherever, so that we kind of know where we're at, because I know that things have been. Changed and stuff and I'm kind of losing track, to be honest with how many positions we have. So an updated like list of last this point, if we approve this tonight. This is the positions we currently have a measure R. I don't know if you have that now. If you don't, then you could get it to us later.
Well, I can, I can verbally tell you that. And we will give you a chart that has that information on it, but we have seven officer positions available to fill. Six of those are filled. We have one opening that's in a detective's position. We have two dispatchers, one's filled, one we're converting tonight. Then we have half F T E and the records, which we've had for several years. And we have the professional standards officer that's funded with, with measure our program money. So those are the positions that. Are currently funded and then obviously the second dispatcher. Converts to the admin analyst in measure R with this action tonight if it goes through.
Right. Okay. Thank you. That's very helpful. I just want to kind of have that. So as we go forward, if we're doing anything with positions with the council, has the authority to do that, that we, I kind of know where we stand. Maybe at some point get that out to the council, all the members of council, so they have that updated list. That would be awesome. So thank you for those. So yeah, again, I support this. I think it's great. I think it has everything to do with transparency in this town. You know, people will say, you know, oh, do we need some, you know, galt is the small little whatever, but like Mr. Papinow said, I, I agree. And he, and he's in law enforcement. Mr. Councilor Lozano and Papinow both are from law enforcement backgrounds, so they would know more than all the rest of us. That this is, this is something that's been a long time coming and needed. And I just, you know, I wore my Kevin Ton pin tonight just to remind me of how. You know, important things like, and decisions like this are for our department and how they can really, you know. Save lives and, 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 you know, create transparency in the community. So with that, I, I, I think I will get off. My soapbox here and. Does there any hands raised online from the public, Rose?
There, excuse me, there is currently no hands raised.
Okay. And any emails came in while we were discussing Miss Hubert?
Yes, we have one written comment from Ralph Cortez. Will cap, will cameras be applicable to our canines? Is this something Axon offers?
I'm going to have to punt to Tom because we did not talk about outfitting the canine, the actual canines themselves.
Yeah, that's a great question by the citizen there, by the way. So we have a couple of options. We can use the body three on canines. We can also use the flex two camera, which is a point of view camera. It can be mounted in multiple ways. It's very popular with tactical teams, motorcycle officers. Lots of different mounting options and their harnesses we can set up in collars that we could actually mount a camera on, on a canine.
Thank you, Tom. And that was a great question, Mr. Cortez. Thank you for bringing that forward to us. Is there any other comments, last minute comments from members of council before I. Move to look for a motion. No. Okay. Well, as promised, I will entertain a motion if. Mister, Councilor Lozano, if you would like to move this item. Forward and the action would be to adopt a resolution approving an initial five year contract with Axon. Enterprises Incorporated to purchase body worn in camera and in car cameras along with. The associated software authorized the city manager to execute agreement in the amount of four hundred and ninety six thousand for a period of five years from July first, two thousand and twenty one to. June thirtieth to two thousand and twenty six. Number two, converting one measure our police dispatcher position to a position of administrative analyst. One slash two and number three, adjusting fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty two appropriations and measure our fund zero four seven to the amount of two hundred and twenty three thousand. And ten dollars and general fund zero zero one in the amount of eighteen thousand, one hundred and eighty for the first year of the body worn and in car camera program. So moved. Moved by council member Lozano. I'm going to give the second to Councilor Papinow. And I will ask for a roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Sandu.
I.
Councilmember Papinow.
I.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
I.
Councilmember Lozano.
I.
Mayor Farmer.
Yes. I didn't pass this five zero. Thank you for the presentation, Chief Kalanowski, and it looks like Tom already signed up, but thank you again to him for his time.
Thank you.
All right. Without further ado, we will move on. To our next item, which is from our public works department and it is our C Street Enhancement Project, C I P five twenty F Consultant Contract Award.
Great. Thank you, Mayor, and good evening and fellow council members. Mike Selling, your public works director. I'll share my screen here. Hang on a second. See. Is it showing full screen?
There we go. There you go.
There we go. All right. Great. Right. So the item before you tonight. For your consideration and approval is a consulting contract for the engineering and outreach efforts. Associated with the C Street enhancements project. Given the importance of this project, I have a brief presentation for you. So the project limits shown here are from Sixth Street on the left or the west side. Over to Civic Drive on the east side. And as you will note, there are essentially two distinct areas with Lincoln Way as the point where the road right away changes. And that's essentially the orangish color, I guess you'll say on the right to the. Green or aqua blue color on the left. So a little bit of background on this project. Planning efforts were started way back in two thousand and eight and the project was initially part of the city's. Central goal complete streets project back in two thousand and sixteen. However, it wasn't included in the construction contract at that time. Due to a lack of sufficient funding as the construction bids came in much higher than anticipated. So this, this segment on C Street was removed from the, the complete streets project. However, the city did not give up and was awarded two and a half million dollars for construction. For this segment by Seco, the Sacramento Area Council of Governments in two thousand and eighteen. And we anticipate that this two and a half million dollars for construction will be programmed later in two thousand and twenty two. Next year. So this line conceptually shows what the street cross section was envisioned to look like. And I want to note that this concept was developed for the segment really from Lincoln to Sixth Street only. Also, to implement this throughout the full project, if we were to do this from the whole civic drive to Sixth Street. Would cost us probably another roughly, I don't know, I'd say four to five million dollars or so. And obviously we don't have those additional funds. So given the two and a half million dollar grant. Limitation that we are working with, we'll be utilizing that money to provide landscape medians. Decorative lighting, as you can kind of see on this conceptual cross section. Improved bike lanes and sidewalk and pavement repairs. So some of the project keys. We'll need to review and update the project design to make sure we meet current standards. As well as other potential changes that may be desired and those may come through the outreach efforts. This contract does include a significant public outreach component, which will include specific engagement with the fronting businesses and property owners. The project does not require any additional right away, so we'll need to make sure that any changes don't trigger the need for additional right away. And then lastly, we'll be working with the consultant as well as the property owners and business owners. To minimize the construction impacts to their operations once construction actually starts. So the schedule, the consultant contract is tonight's council item. And then once in place, if approved by the council tonight, the design and outreach efforts would begin roughly next month or so, once the contracts all executed. And be completed in about a year from now. So April twenty two. Then we'll move forward with advertising the project. And then once we have confirmation from Secog. On the funds being programmed and available, we'll award the construction contract. There's usually a couple of months or so in between awarding the contract and the construction starting. And that's really for the contractor to order their materials and just get all their construction logistics in place. And then as far as timing on the actual construction itself, I would estimate probably in the three to four month time range. And, you know, there's always the weather caveat on that. So because we'll be getting, you know, late into the year around that time. So. But hopefully we could, we could get it done before, before the rains start earnest. So with that, that concludes my brief presentation on this project and staff and I and Mr. Clarkson are available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Solly.
I can stop sharing here. And I'm struggling with that. I know, Rose, if you may be able to help me with that.
Yeah. You should see somewhere if you have over the very top.
Yeah.
Um, stop participants. There we go.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Um, I think we will. Start with public comment. Do we have any written public comment?
I do have written comment. This one is from Rose Levine. I would like to express my concern for the proposed C Street improvements that are being planned. Businesses need to be informed as to what is planned as far as design and construction interruptions. My business is located on C Street along with many others and parking will be an issue. I like the idea of trees and wider sidewalks, but not a fan of center divides and no street parking. And that is it.
Thank you, Ms. Levine. Do we have any hands raised online, Rose?
We do not have any hands raised online.
Okay. And I will go to the council and we'll take comments from council. We'll start with Vice Mayor Sandu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thank you, Mr. Sailing, give us that report. On this C I P project. I have a couple, maybe question or some concern or comment. First of all, this project was in back in two thousand and eight when the central overpass, right? There's the part of that project, right?
I believe so. Mr. Clarkson may be able to, to better answer that question.
Yeah, this is Mr. Clark. This is Clarkson. Back when the Central Salt Interchange was done, you know, the planning for the C Street Complete Street process began. And that included Lincoln and a few other streets in that area, but it was delayed. The C Street improvements were delayed. But it was delayed. The C Street improvements were delayed because they wanted to get the construction of the overpass done first and then to come back and revisit it. Nobody knew at that time that we would lose all types of redevelopment funds and not be able to do it. And you know, nobody could predict the future, but that's that's what stopped us from moving forward on on C Street after the interchange was completed.
Thank you, Mr. Clarkson. The other thing is, you know, this design, whatever they proposed in back in 2008, why it was not in the report, I just see from the slide. I don't know. I might be missing something or the other council member, these design on the C Street, this is not in the report. I don't know, maybe some other council member, they might be took that from the website, but I don't get a chance. So is there something missing or?
No, yeah, no, this item was really just the consultant contract award, and so we did not include that in the in the item packet.
Okay.
You know, so when it was, I'm sorry, yeah, when it was pulled from the consent item to put on the department, we put together the presentation. So I apologize to Vice Mayor.
You know, my concern is there might be, you know, that item approved back in 2008. But if it's much better, you know, there's something, some kind of update or changes so we can see. Because there is, you know, 10 back in 2008, 13 years ago, there is something proved with the council. I like to honor them, but I also like to see there is something changing on the C Street. How that will work or not. That's my reason was asking, you know, I don't get the chance to review that. Okay, then the other my just question is, you know, these $498,000, this is the just a consulting firm, what what their responsibility and what can be their job?
Yeah, yeah, this is for their contract and it does include a bit of a contingency. I think there's roughly about $30,000 as potential for any unforeseen things that may come up in the process. But essentially, the the contract is for them to basically review the design and revise it. Like I said, there's a there's a very robust public outreach component to their contract. So we'll be meeting, you know, with with all the businesses and property owners along the limits. You know, talking about, you know, not only as the one business owner in the in the comment indicated was, you know, what are going to be the construction impacts and how to minimize those so that way customers can get to their business while the construction is going on. But also even before that, you know, where are the medians going to be located and, you know, and where might there be changes in where people can, you know, access existing driveways? Right now with no medians out there, you know, you basically can get access from any direction, left, right turns, you know, even crossing movements in some cases. So with medians, there are going to be some loss of of access. So we'll definitely want to, you know, go over that with them and make sure that, you know, everybody understands and 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 hopefully, you know, is in agreement just to, you know, where those medians are located.
Thank you. And then.
This is Clarkson. May I interject on something of Vice Mayor Sandow? You had a terrific statement when you said that this project 13 years ago it was done. It was, you know, there was a vision at that time and a lot of energy in this in upfront energy we're going to be putting into it is to revisit the proposed design and layout back in 2008 and make changes the way that the city council and the way that the the that the customers out there are looking for at this time because we know there are changes that have happened. And so so we're going to address all of the concerns and address, you know, if we're going to look at changing some parts of the, you know, the layout from the initial to to what we're going to come up with today as a group, as a team with our with with all the with all of the property owners out there, the businesses, city council, planning commission. You know, there's a lot of energy going to be put into that to get to to, you know, look at all different alternatives, come up what is the best for right now and then and then go forward with that. So it's a lot of energy upfront before we start designing.
Thank you. You know, Mr. Clarkson, that's that's the biggest my concern is is 13 years ago, whatever approved, it might be some of the component on on that plan might be not feasible in this time. But I don't, that's why until I don't see it, I don't heard from the business people on the C Street, it's very hard to make a decision. And then you are telling me we have the opportunity to do that, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. Then, Mr. Selling, the other question is, I know you guys interview around six RFP, right?
Correct.
Consulting firm, right?
Correct.
And after that, you decided there is a two companies there at the last interview, right?
Correct.
These two are Somas and GHD, right?
Correct.
Okay. And can you little bit tell me why you pick up Somas over the GHD? Because GHD also did some other project with us, right?
Yeah, actually, they do have, I think, a current contract.
Brilliant Bullawatt also, they did that too, right?
Brilliant, they did. And actually, yeah, they are also on the walnut document.
My just question is, when, you know, when you guys make a decision to give a contract to somebody, there might be something with the qualification and cost effective as a financing, what they will come. What was the reason? If you can brief me?
Yeah, I'll defer to Mr. Clarkson. First, and just as a general sense, yeah, when we look at proposals that are provided by various, you know, in this case, engineering consultants for a particular contract, we definitely look at their qualifications, I can tell you right off the bat. I mean, we don't want to work with people that we feel aren't qualified to do the work. So that's that's one of the first key things. You know, it's a public contract. It's not like a construction bid, you know, where we open the bids and it's the lowest bidder kind of thing. Basically, for professional services, you can't open, you know, essentially their their fee proposal. What we can do is we can look at the number of hours and the appropriate level of staffing that they're, you know, proposing. And we can, you know, somewhat get a sense of, you know, are they assigning the right level of folks and the right number of hours to get the job done consistent with what we think that the effort is going to take? So we look at that as well. But it's only once we, you know, fully evaluate the proposals on all the merits, do they, you know, like in this case, we emphasize that there is the need for for a very robust community outreach effort involved in this project. And want to make sure that they that that comes across in their proposal as well. So those are the, you know, and every job is different. So we're looking sometimes for slightly different things. But with that, I mean, that's just in general, and then I'll defer to Mr. Clarkson as he was on the the committee that that reviewed the proposals for for more specifics in this case.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is Clarkson. What we we had some really good proposals by the companies out there. And when we, you know, as as Mr. Selling indicated, we we look at a lot of features, a lot of parts of the of the packages that they have. GHD and Somas kind of rose to the top because of the teams that they put together, not only their design unit, but more importantly, their outreach people, team that they were that they had assembled. Recently, Somas had had completed several of these type of projects that are done in 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 business areas that are needing improvement. And and going through their RP, going through their proposal and their and their presentation, we feel that it's going to be a good fit for the city. They do a lot of one-on-one reach out, just not having workshops. But they actually, you know, have shown and we did it when we when we did some review on them from other cities that they have been part of, that they knock on doors, they talk with people constantly. And during during the design and also during construction, they get to know all of the business people out there, you know, along with staff does that too. But it's it just seems that there's there's a little bit more experience that they have in in doing that outreach to the public. And it's going to be a real sensitive area, not only during the planning portions, but definitely during construction to make sure that we minimize our impacts to the community out there.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Clarkson. I understand what why the reason. Thank you. So now I let the other person go if I have any question. I will come back.
All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mr. Papinow, do you have any comments on this item?
Well, my main concern after reviewing it was the outreach and particularly the input regarding the design from merchants and businesses. And I think that's been addressed and obviously is a priority part of the contract. One thing that popped up, just to clarify during the PowerPoint, was an asterisk and it said pending funding programming by SECOG. And just to clarify, that's just a timing thing, not an if thing.
Correct. Yeah, we definitely have the the appropriation. But we basically have to wait for SECOG to say that, okay, we've programmed the funding and it's there. And that's a requirement before you can award a construction contract, you basically have to have the money in place. So we anticipate that that will occur sometime probably in the September, August, September timeframe next year, council member. And so that's what's noted on the schedule. And but yeah, I did want to put that asterisk because if something hiccups or, you know, that that the funding gets delayed a little bit, I just wanted to be upfront about that potential. It's it's a very small likelihood, but you know, there's always that chance kind of thing. So.
Right. No, I appreciate that. And I just wanted to clarify that we're not going to spend a half a million dollars making a plan and then the funding is not there. It's just a matter of a potential delay. So appreciate that.
Correct.
And that's the only thing I have right now. I'll pass it on.
Thank you. Councilmember Vandenberg.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I feel like we're coming in on the back end of this and we're asked to approve something. We really didn't get to, you know, see a design of any sort other than the presentation that you just showed us, but was not in my packet. So that bothers me a little bit. I'm very concerned about the street parking along there. A lot of the businesses are have limited parking as it is, you know, such as the Frosty to steal, you know, people being able to turn left into their parking lot, the few slots they gab or a loss of parking for them could really hurt. If I remember correctly, in 2008, it really hurt some of the businesses. And I think some of them actually went out of business because of the construction and how it was implemented. So I mostly I wish we would have had more heads up, a fuller view of what is about to happen or we're going to vote on.
Yeah, no, I guess what I would say is is the project has been programmed in the, you know, capital improvement program. And so, you know, this is just the construction contract. There is, while there was a design previously, and that's kind of where our consultant will start from. But again, it's been a long time, as the Vice Mayor noted, and, you know, standards have changed, businesses have changed. You know, and so there may be different, you know, things that we want to do now that either people didn't think of back then or or just, you know, want to see something different than what was originally designed. So through this outreach effort, we will definitely, you'll definitely have an opportunity to, you know, to see it before anything's approved as far as a final, you know, design, if you will.
So what what will happen is fully flexible?
Yes. Within the confines of the funding, which is essentially the limits of the project.
Right. I understand that.
Right.
That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Vandenberg. Councilmember Lozano.
Yeah, again, it the interest is not being redundant. I just have a couple of questions. Mr. Selling, the 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 consultant that we're that you're asking for the contract to be approved for is going to design a project?
Correct.
Okay. So we don't necessarily have a plan that that you would provide other than a conceptual drawing from several years ago?
Correct. Mr. Clarkson may be able to expand on that a bit. My understanding was, I believe, there was a design because the project was included in that in that Central Gulf Streets Improvements Project. However, due to the lack of funding, it didn't go forward. It was removed. So there was a design at that time. However, again, here we are, you know, five-ish years later. And, you know, just to kind of take another look and, you know, maybe the bulk of it, you know, will you know, will remain and there will be little tweaks or whatnot, or maybe there are some potential substantial changes. And again, so until we really, you know, start to get into the process with the consultant, you know, time will tell basically how much may change. But with that, Mr. Clarkson, is that accurate?
Partly, the design that was completed was between Lincoln and Sixth Street.
All right.
And and so so we may or may not use parts of that design, you know, not we are, again, as indicated earlier, is that we're going to revisit the entire concept, go through workshops, go through reach, you know, outreach and and try to to see which direction the community wants to move. And then if we can use part of that design, we will. If we can't, this this proposal that we have in front of you right now for Somas can do it from scratch. We have enough money to do it from scratch if we find part, you know, parts or most of that design is not is not relevant. So so we have an open book here.
Okay, I appreciate that. And I have been aware of this impending desire to improve that area for as long as I've been on the council through the capital improvement program. But it might might be a good idea maybe to have a workshop on the capital improvement program for our two new members because I can see how that would catch you kind of off guard. So I appreciate that. I appreciate you wanting to update the plan or or actually put a plan together that is a 2021 plan as opposed to back way back when and the connection to Sixth Street, I think, is important as well. So I would just say this, and my last comment is this, and as Mr. Heinz knows, I'm about public outreach and in my mind, just so you all know where I'm at, public outreach isn't taking it to the beautification committee, to the planning commission and to park and rec commission for, as an example, I'm not saying you would take them to all those. It is much more than that. It's going to a chamber event, maybe even a luncheon and saying, hey, we want input from all the all the businesses, not just the ones on C Street. But maybe the focus group of C Street, what their parking needs are, what, you know, all that stuff. So it's not just taking it to the committees and commissions that we appoint, but but certainly trying to reach out like Mr. Heinz has done in his eight months here to address some of those those needs as well as get the input back from a larger group of people, cast a larger net, if you will. So that's all I have. I appreciate the the thorough report and I will pass it on. All right. Thank you, Councilmember Lozano. Yeah, so I I too, just to touch on kind of some things that were said. Yeah, I was kind of puzzled why the report like was in there. I understand that originally was a consent and we moved it when Mr. Heinz and I had our agenda review. We decided to put it as a, we just to put it as its own discussion item, which was clearly a good move. But I just thought too that there was no drawings in there and I was looking at that late today. And I actually had to Google around and find the original 2008. And I vaguely remember this, of course, I don't think the only person that was even here out of any of us might have been Ms. Mendez, I believe, was part of that. I remember her, if I'm not mistaken, having some discussions with some business owners way back. And I was only involved because I was going to those meetings at the time when we were having discussions. And there was, there was, there was a big, there was a lot of concerned people down C about having the center median and losing that suicide lane and not being able to have people turn into their businesses and no way to make a U-turn. And so there was a lot of discussion and I just vaguely remember that being the controversial piece of it. And there was a lot of, there was a lot of talk back then. But again, you know, that was 13 years ago, I think. And I and I actually looked at the presentation, not the presentation, I looked at the conceptual drawings and there was, there was a conceptual drawing for all of C Street, even City Hall. There was even conceptual drawings for like the corner where the Kevin Tom Memorial is, which clearly wasn't there at the time. So it really much, there was drawings, there was kind of a conceptual for all the way down. But um, I think that I think some of my concerns going into the meeting tonight were were definitely answered by Mr. Selling and Mr. Clarkson. And I am very, very pleased to hear that 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 even though
And I am very, very pleased to hear that 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 even though there was something that we had that was, you know, drawn up in 2008 that we are going to, you know, not so much start from exact scratch, but we're going to say, okay, we do have this conceptual drawings. What of this is still relevant? What do we want to do? There's going to be extensive outreach. And and I think everybody here has mentioned that we are going to hold, you know, feet to the flame with that. Because I was going over my head as as you other councilmembers are talking. And I don't think, other than Ms. Levine's office on C, I don't believe there's one single business that is either was even there or was owned by the same people that own it now from probably the Save Mart Plaza all the way down into Old Town. Those are all either new owners, people, whatever. So I don't think any of those people have a clue of anything that was talked about or planned or drawn or anything. And so these people are in the dark completely. And so I think it's important, we reach out, we we hear their concerns like you're going to do. And I've I've assured, I've seen, you know, Mr. Clarkson reassured us that that's going to be a key component of it, I think, is absolutely critical. Because what we don't want to do is repeat what we did on Lincoln Way, which again, none of us were here then, but I remember it. The Lincoln Way project back in the 90s or whatever was kind of a disaster because people were upset, we lost a ton of parking. And it was meant to be good and improve the look, which it did, but the side effect was a lot of bad things that happened with. And there was businesses that suffered massively. And we don't want to go down that road again. And so I appreciate, you know, the commitment from Mr. Selling and his staff and from the city and the staff, every all the staff that are going to be involved in this to do that outreach and make sure that whatever we decide to beautify that area is going to be what everybody is going to like. And I know that can be a challenge sometimes, but it's important because these are businesses, you know, and customers and losing parking is a big deal. It's a very big deal. So on behalf of the business community, I think that all of us are, I think I could speak on behalf of the council that we all want to make sure the business community is heavily involved in this discussion. I think we've all echoed that tonight. So I thank you for my councilman fellow councilmembers for, you know, pushing that point. So I I don't really have any just questions about the design because again, I think it's a mute point to talk about what I liked about the design, thinking back or what I saw today. I I mean, I can go on and on about that. I don't think it's, I think it, I don't think it's worth it because we're all going to have business owners look at it and we're going to have discussions and and that. So I will go back to the council or actually, is there any public comment since we've been talking about this, Ms. Hubert?
No written comment.
Rose, any hands raised online?
Yes, I do have a hand. I have Mr. Jerry Sauter.
Okay, Mr. Sauter, go ahead.
Mr. Sauter, you have five minutes.
Thank you. I just had or wanted to share a concern, at least for what I see in the documentation that was included online for council. It says that the project is going to be 2.5 million from grant funds and 1.2 million of city funds. So if that's the case and we're doing another one of these grant chasing projects where my, our tax dollars is going to have to foot the rest of the bill to make another complete street, then I do have some concerns with that. Since I know that many, many members of the community continue to share their public safety concerns for numerous areas throughout Galt that don't seem to get addressed. So I'm really, really concerned if this proposal and the work that we're doing is going to have a deficit to the city in terms of funding, where the remaining amount of this project is going to come out of tax dollars that could be spent for other safety improvements. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sauter. Mr. Selling, would you like to?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so maybe this wouldn't help, you know, put Mr. Sauter and the other folks who have similar concerns a little bit more at ease anyway. So these funds that that the city would bring to match typically on these transportation related grants, there is a local match component. Meaning that, you know, whether it's the federal government or the state government or, you know, even regionally, these grant programs, they want to know that the agency has some, you know, skin in the game, if you will. So so there is a typically a match component. And because this these dollars that we got from CACOG, they're purely for construction. So that means that we have to basically bring the money that's going to pay for the design, the outreach, you know, the construction inspection, if you will. So anyway, that's that's the portion that's the cities. Now, the cities' local funds that are paying for this, this comes out of essentially your gas tax money. So and it flows in in various ways. It's it's a bit complex. But anyway, so the Sacramento Area Council of Governments and the Sacramento Transportation Authority, STA, is where a lot of the, or I should not say CACOGs are the grant lines come from, sorry for the confusion. STA is where the the local match money is coming from. And so that's that's essentially the half cent sales tax on gasoline that's applied to the region and flows through the Sacramento Transportation Agency and then is distributed in various ways, sometimes grants. But there is a formulated portion that every city and the county gets in in Sacramento County. And those are the funds that we're talking about here for the local match portion.
Okay, hopefully they answered your question, Mr. Sauter. So to kind of piggyback on that, does that mean, so coming out of gas tax money, is that measure A? Am I off on that?
Correct.
Okay, so so is that is that? Would that be money that Mr. Sutter was referring to where, you know, that he he feels that he was worried that we were spending money that could be used for other concerns of safety and roads? Is that the same kind of money or are we talking about apples and oranges here?
So there there, you know, I mean, there's an alphabet soup, I guess, when it comes to transportation of different funds and some have strings, most have strings. Measure actually is relatively flexible, I guess I'll characterize it as. Typically, most agencies like what we're doing here will use it for their local match money to go after, you know, bigger grant opportunities. It can be used for your routine maintenance. However, the legislature back in, I think it was 2017, passed SB 1, Senate Bill 1, which essentially the city gets some specific money for road maintenance and rehabilitation. We call it RMRA money. And that's the money that we typically use for the routine maintenance, filling potholes and, you know, paving streets, that kind of thing. So a little bit different flavors of money, but so we we, you know, I mean, it's basically just trying to match, you know, the best money that we can to to what what our needs are and what the grant opportunities are.
So I think the community, I just trying to understand what concerns would be and what I might be hearing from the community going forward is that I just think their concern is that, you know, that we're about to, you know, spend some money on something that's going to, you know, I think is not a negative. It's, you know, we're going to try to beautify the city and we're going to try to do the best to create a gateway from, you know, down to Old Tyre. Remember this whole purpose of this whole thing. But at the same time, people are going to be like, well, that's great, but are we spending money on that? That we could have done things over here where it's, you know, where we need some stuff done to a street or whatever. Are we? So I'm just trying to understand that. Does that make sense, that question?
Yeah, that does, Mayor. And yeah, maybe to hopefully, you know, clarify a little bit. So, yeah, this this money, while it could be flexibly used for, you know, routine street maintenance, we again want to maximize the use of it. And so if we can take some of it, in this case, you know, maybe as much as 1.2 million dollars of our money and get another two and a half million, you know, that's a pretty good bang for your buck. Or you could just, you know, spend the 1.2 on doing routine maintenance kind of thing. Now, again, we, I won't say we ever have sufficient money, but Galt, you know, I would say, particularly coming from where I came from, our roads are in much better shape than most cities and counties in the state. We're pretty fortunate here. But we do have, like, again, I said that RMRA money, the road maintenance rehabilitation money from SB 1 that we use as our, you know, bread and butter maintenance revenue, if you will, so.
Okay, I'm going to take the question from Mr. Lozano. Go ahead.
Yeah, I appreciate it. And I I think I understood Mr. Sauter's question a little differently. And and well, it may actually, I think I understood it the way the mayor did. And and I think the answer to the question is yes, we could spend it somewhere else. But I but I go back to what we've approved in the Capital Improvement Program. And maybe, again, maybe this is something we need to bring up and have the public have a view of and some input as we as we approve that in the future to see what the needs are. So we're balancing, you know, what the staff believes our our immediate needs are. And when I mean staff, I mean, you know, Mr. Selling, you know, Amy Mendez for Economic Development. All of those people having input into that process. And so maybe maybe your priorities change next year or the year after, based on on what the community input is as well as staff input. I I like the idea of this particular section of land. As we all know, that there have been a few complaints from the community about a business complex. I'm sorry, not even a business, shopping complex that's adjacent to this property, being in disrepair and having some issues. And hopefully this will, this type of improvement in that area will help force the hand of some some property owners to or a property owner to to step up their game. And I know I said that last meeting about another topic, but it's it's kind of the same same concept. So so, yeah, I think I think we need to take another look at our capital improvement program moving forward and really get, honestly, for my two colleagues that are new to the council, a real good understanding of what that looks like moving forward. So that's it.
And I mix, I'm sorry, go ahead. I thought you were done, but. Okay, I I yeah, I I get, I understand completely what you're saying, Rich. And I think that I have remember that too. And is that, you know, if we are approving, you know, projects that are in the works and these are the, these are the CIP projects that are approved. Some of them are lingering, have lost funding. They were supposed to, before they did, they had, you know, delays and setbacks and things. And for us to now come forward and say, we just want to pull the plug on a project, just because we have now identified some other things that are kind of a priority to ours, doesn't necessarily mean that we're, you know, I mean, what we need to do is, like you said, going forward, maybe start identifying some other projects, like maybe some things on Carillion Boulevard, some intersections that are of concern that Mr. Sauter is probably referring to. And we can make those, you know, a priority in our CIP and we can look for funding. But I I do agree that I think we 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 can't play Monday morning quarterback all the time and go back when stuff has already been kind of approved and just, you know, just throw everything that's been done to that point. You know, because what I saw on Fourth Street, the Promenade and all that, that was also part of all that project. And that actually came out very well. And it was, it was, it was, it was, it was a, it was a great project that got that got completed, that segment of it. So I think, yeah, we just want to be cognizant of our money. And I think that, again, what I'm happy the most about is that we are going to make sure that whatever this project is ends is now, 13 years later, that it will be something that's going to be right for everybody, that's going to be touched by it. So, yeah, I think that's, so did anybody have any comments? Mr. Sandu, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, the last my comment, I thank you for Mr. Selling and Mr. Clarkson, very clear what my intent to do. But I even this, even this was not in the report, but I'm very much satisfied because you will come back to us. And especially, I was very happy. My question is why they choose the Somas over the other company. I'm very much, that's the way, you know, I'm the biggest thing in their mind. And I think especially in my mind, community outreach and business outreach. And that's why I'm very happy to, you know, the contract with Somas. Thank you. Then I I support that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Someone, Councilmember had a hand. No? Okay, three other hand up, I thought. Okay. Mike, did you have an additional comment or was that?
No, I think my my phone is sensitive to my breathing or something.
Well, if we have no other council comment on this, I, and we have no hands raised online, Rose?
That is correct. No further hands raised.
Then I will, someone wants to make a motion to move this item forward. I will read the item. Hang on a second, I have to pull up that. We're looking for a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing city manager to execute a consultant contract with PISOMAS. I'm hoping I'm saying that right, in the amount of $498,156 for the C Street enhancement project, CIP 520F with contingency of 29,844 for unanticipated costs. Anybody would like to make a motion? Moved by Vice Mayor Sandu. Seconded by Councilmember Papino.
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Hi.
Councilmember Papino.
Hi.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Hi.
Councilmember Lozano.
Hi.
Mayor Farmer.
Hi. Item passes five to zero. And just a last note, please, for future, I would, it would be helpful if we did have the presentation in the packet. I would have probably resolved a lot of questions in advance, I think. So, all right, thank you, staffer. And thank you, Mr. Clarkson, for being on the call and clarifying a lot of our questions. Thank you, Mr. Selling. So we will now move on to item I, communication. Do we have any communication this evening, Ms. Hubert?
Not this evening.
Okay, and we'll move on to item J, which we will now adjourn the Galt City Council and convey to the Galt Successor Agency.
Board Member Sandu.
Hi.
Board Member Papino.
Here.
Board Member Vandenberg.
Here.
Board Member Lozano.
Here.
And Board Member Farmer.
Here. Item two, public comment. Do we have any public comment this evening, Ms. Hubert?
We do not.
And do we have any hands raised online, Rose?
We do not.
Okay, move on to item three, our information consent agenda, which is the subject minutes of the December 1st, 2020 meeting. And action is accepted, it says submitted. Do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Papino. Seconded by Councilmember Lozano. Roll call vote, please.
Board Member Sandu.
Hi.
Board Member Papino.
Hi.
Board Member Vandenberg.
Hi.
Board Member Lozano.
Hi.
Board Member Farmer.
Hi. Five zero. Number four, departmental. Subject is the successor agency. The city of Galt proposed 2021 tax allocation refunding bonds. Ms. Tyson?
Thank you very much, Board Members. The item before you is the beginnings of a refunding of some bonds that are part of the successor agency. And we have with us tonight the financial advisor on this team who is going to present for you. His name is Albert Pichet. We also have with us to answer any questions, our bond and legal counsel for this project, David Farmer. So I'm going to go ahead and start this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Albert Pichet. I'm a municipal advisor and I'll give you a little bit more about my firm a few slides down. And I also have with me Dave Farmer from the law firm of Jones Hall, who is a bond counsel. Do we have the presentation, Claire?
You know, can, Rose, can you enable me? Yeah.
So we have a brief presentation for you, which go about 10 minutes, and I think it'll answer a lot of your questions. And then we'll be glad to answer any more that you may have.
Go ahead, Claire. Thank you.
Okay, that's the last page. If we can go to the first page. Thank you. Thank you, Rose.
You're welcome.
Okay, so the second page. So as you may know, the former redevelopment agency issued bonds back in 2011. It issued 7.7 million of tax, tax exempt tax allocation bonds and also about $6 million of a Series B taxable bonds. The Series A bonds were scheduled to mature in 2033 and the Series B bonds were scheduled to mature in 2026. Unfortunately, as you also may know, in 2011, the state of California ended redevelopment agencies. And all of the funds from redevelopment bonds were essentially frozen by the California State Department of Finance. So the 2011 bonds were able to be, are now able to be called as of September the first, this September the first of 2021. And so very similar to how you might refinance a home mortgage, you replace You replace existing debt with higher interest rates with new debt with lower interest rates and the difference is your savings. So the bond savings is really going to result in in a benefit, not just to the city, but also to the affected agencies. By increasing their residual property tax trust fund monies that come back to them instead of going to pay the bonds. So if you'll turn to page two, then three, page three, actually. So these are the affected agencies. That if you look at the bottom, they share the one percent tax, general property tax that gets collected on all assessed value taxable properties. So these are the agencies that would benefit by the refinancing and I will just point out some of the larger ones that are in excess of million. That would be the Galt Joint Union High School District. The the elementary district, the county. The city of Galt and the Consume N S CSD. But there are other other agencies, as you can see here, that will benefit by the refinancing. And I want to stress and I may say this again, this is going to be over a ten year period. And a lot of the 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 savings are really going to begin in the twenty two twenty three fiscal year, there will be some savings in twenty one twenty two. But a lot of this will will be over the the next ten years, starting next year. Next page, please. Thank you. So on the left hand column, this is the gross savings that's going to accrue to the city in. And an estimated amount based off of. Assessed value projections. Some of it starts a little bit in twenty one twenty. Excuse me, twenty twenty one twenty one twenty two, and then again, most of it starts in twenty two twenty three and then goes throughout. So the left hand column is the gross savings to the city. The right hand column, it's called the present value savings to the city, so what is present value, so present value, it basically discounts. Those numbers back into today's dollars. So your present value savings and this is net, all of these savings are net of all cost of issuance. In in today's dollars, that would be one point eight million dollars. And after you subtract out the funds on hand and so forth, you have a net present value savings of four hundred and forty three thousand. Which is twenty four percent of the prior existing bonds and you have about ten million in prior bonds that are that are going to be refinanced and replaced with 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 new bonds. By the way, this twenty four percent net present value, that's towards the bottom of the page. The GFOA suggests a refinancing for savings if if there's at least three percent of. Net present value savings and again, net present value is in today's dollars, net of all cost of issuance. So this is a very good refunding. Most of the refundings that I've worked on are in the five to seven percent range. I think this might be a record because it's in excess of twenty percent. So you're really replacing higher interest rate debt with much lower interest rate debt. And the savings, you know, are going to be to the benefit of of the affected agencies, including the city, this is the city's portion. Next page. So as I'd mentioned, there's. Ten point nine million of series two thousand eleven A and two thousand eleven. Series B taxable bonds that are going to be refinanced. So there's some unused proceeds that are going to be used to pay down the new series twenty twenty one bonds. And by the way, the DOF sent the agency a letter encouraging you to refinance the bonds using the unspent proceeds. So that the affected agencies would share in that benefit. So the good news is that the twenty eleven B bonds are going to be paid off entirely. Further good news that the new series twenty twenty one bonds will have an estimated par of a little bit less than three million dollars and have a maturity of. September first of twenty thirty three, so we're not extending the maturity. And I'd like to again stress that the savings is all net of all cost of issuance. So there's actually two ways to sell bonds, the first, we'll call these two methods of sales. The first is a public offering. Which is sold through an official statement to many investors. You need to go out and get a rating, you need to print an official statement, there has to be disclosure council and this is how you sold your twenty eleven bonds. The other way is selling through a private placement, which is sold through banks through a term sheet. With multiple banks, including your local banks being invited to bid. So that method of sale, if everything, if you approve this, is going to be determined by the city manager staff with recommendations from the finance team in mid May. And it's going to be based off of current market conditions. Next page, please, thank you. So it's financing team, I'd like, we're going to spend just a couple of minutes on this page, I'd like to introduce again, Dave Farmer from Jones Hall to. Give you about a minute of. Explain, uh, talk about Jones Hall and their experience in with the city, Dave.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Albert, Dave Farmer here. I'm partner with the law firm of Jones Hall. We're a bond counsel firm exclusively and we've been proud to represent Galt since basically since the early nineties on most all of their. Bond issues, we did the two thousand eleven redevelopment agency bonds that Albert was speaking of that we are proposing to refund. We also did the two thousand two redevelopment agency bonds. Which were refunded as part of that two thousand eleven issue. Additionally, we've done, you know, city related issues, we did the financing for the police facility. We've done several of the city's assessment districts and CFDs and so forth, so. A long and and great relationship with the city, which we're proud to have and we're proud to continue, so. We're happy to be involved and. And like to see the city putting their best foot forward for both themselves. In terms of saving money and for the local taxing entities that they're doing it on behalf of. So thank you very much for the involvement and we look forward to this moving forward.
Thank you very much, Dave, that was very helpful. And so I'd like to just give another two minutes, the underwriter or the placement agent, depending on which method of sale would be Hilltop Securities. They've been in public finance since nineteen forty six, they're nationwide firm, their firm trades on the New York Stock Exchange. They have six offices in California, sales offices, including one in Roseville. They're obviously registered with the SEC and the MSRB. So they can be either an underwriter or a a placement agent in case of a private placement. My firm, I am Pichet and Associates, I've actually been in public finance since nineteen eighty five. I started my firm in nineteen ninety six, so this December, it'll be twenty five years in business and I completed about one point one billion in financings. I'm also registered as a municipal advisor with the Securities Exchange Commission. And the Municipal Securities Rulemaking Board, the MSRB. I'm conveniently located about thirty two miles from your city. And I actually began meeting with the city back in October of twenty nineteen regarding the opportunity to refinance these bonds. The trustee is your current trustee, Bank of New York Mellon, obviously, they're a big money center bank, they do a lot of work in the trustee area. The fiscal consultant is RSG and you currently have a current contract with them, they help you develop the the ROBS schedules and so forth. So I wanted to also mention that the financing team is going to work on a contingent basis, will only be compensated from the sale of bonds. With the exception of RSG, which if the bond issue doesn't close for some reason. They can be compensated from the recognized obligation payment schedule, otherwise known as ROBS. And again, the estimated savings that we've produced, prepared for you as of April first is net of all cost of issuance. Next page. The next page, please, thank you. So the next step, so how do we go about getting this money for the city and for the other agencies, the next step would be. This step is for the successor agency to adopt the resolution approving the issuance of refunding bonds. This is it's then taken over to the oversight board for their approval. And that would be in May. The State Department of. The DOF basically has five days to respond to the receipt of the of the oversight board resolution, the bond documents, the plan of refunding and the savings report. And then it has another sixty days to review and approve the refunding, so we would expect that. To be sometime in mid July. So in mid May, we're going to determine the method of sale with and we're going to begin preparing either preliminary official statement for a a public offering of. Bonds or a term sheet that will be prepared. For to be sent out to to banks that bid on this type and that would also include your local banks. So our hope is that the bonds could be sold in July or August after DOF approval. Then on September the first, the two thousand eleven bonds are going to be paid off entirely, we're going to have just a small. Three million dollar issue, the series B twenty two thousand eleven series B bonds, as I'd mentioned earlier, they go away completely. And then the increased RP TTF savings begins in twenty twenty two twenty three. Next page. So tonight, what's before you are the moving forward with the refunding, the delivery of indenture of trust, the acceptance of the bond team. And and also to give direct the city manager to begin implementing refunding activities as necessary. I would also say that if we do move forward with a public offering where there is a preliminary official statement. We would come back to you. At some point, either June or July with the approval for a preliminary official statement. And also a bond purchase agreement. So that determination we expect to be making about May the twelfth. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir, sorry, I'm muted on. I'll go around to council members, starting with. Our Vice Mayor Sandu, I can't see you, oh, there you are. Do you have any?
I do not have any question, I just read the report, it's self explanatory, thank you tonight.
You Vice Mayor, Councilmember Papinow?
I don't have any questions.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Yeah, I I have a couple of quick questions. What risk do we have of? The numbers you provided. Changing by July.
That is a very good question and it's going to be dependent upon interest rates. So unfortunately, I don't have a crystal ball to tell you where interest rates are going, you could hear different. Thoughts that interest rates are going to stay the same, about a month ago, they had gone up. Pretty significantly, now they've kind of leveled off. What I would say is there's a significant amount of savings here, if you were. If your savings was only three to five percent, I think you'd be at risk. But your savings is twenty four percent, so. There are going to be savings here, it just admit, this depends about how much savings. So I'm actually, that's a great question, so I'm currently doing a refunding for San Joaquin Delta College. That's a sixty million dollar issue. And their net present value savings, council member, is only about three and a half to four percent. So they're a lot more nervous because they are very close to the minimal threshold that's. Recommended by the GFOA. So in your cases, I'd mentioned on that one page is twenty four percent, so you're. For lack of a better word, well into the money in terms of savings, does that help?
Yeah, yeah, it does. So you you. Likened it to refinancing your house, which is a fair. Assessment, but there's no rate lock as if. It's it's only at the it's at the for the interest rate and I anticipated to be very reasonable, but. It's at the moment of signing or within a week.
So that's a great question, when do rates get locked? And typically in a public offering, when bonds are sold to the public. Bonds are sold and typically that day or the following day. A bond purchase agreement is signed and then the rates are locked. And that's typically about three weeks prior to the closing. So in a in a private placement. The term sheet goes goes out, it's evaluated, it's sent, by the way, the term sheet goes out to. Maybe fifteen to twenty banks, including your local bank, to see if they'd be interested in bidding on this. You give them two weeks to provide the bid and then they're all due by a certain time and those bids get get analyzed. And typically, they will offer a rate lock for about thirty days. So. I think that's the. A lot is going to be dependent upon when the DFOA gives approval. If they take up to the full amount sixty days, that would be in mid. July and we could close sometime after that. But at some point and as soon as possible, preferably, council member, we try to get the rates locked so that your your savings are then locked in.
Okay, and then just one last question on one of the slides, I don't know which number because I'm looking at my packet, but. It shows fifteen twenty. Taxing agencies, you know, and it. Shows the school districts in there, I didn't think we had any authority or money commingled with the school districts. At the bottom line, you know, it shows like, well, even number, but. Twelve, not even a.
Twelve million.
So so why are all these different agencies all lumped into this one? Page.
That's a good question, if you if you, by the way, Rose, if you could bring that page back up, I can explain that. So. Everybody pays, you know, one percent of their assessed value in. In taxes to different agencies. And so this one percent. The agencies above it is how the one percent is split. So you don't get that money and then send it over, it just basically gets partitioned by the auditor controller over to those agencies. So these are the agencies that all receive a one percent share of the the property tax. Apportionment and that's how, because there's not going to be any more debt service on these redevelopment bonds. These agencies, including the city, of course, are going to benefit by not having to pay the debt service on the bonds, but it's going back to those. Agencies in the form of additional RP TTF money.
Fair enough. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Lozano.
I have nothing.
All right, thank you. So. Just in a hypothetical, let's say rates change. Next month, I mean, what what is the what is the where you said we're at a twenty four percent savings, so. Is it is the change in rates percent for percent or is it a certain ratio for every interest rate change of say like, let's say the interest rate changes like. I don't know, half a percent, is what does that equate into our percentage, is it percent for percent or is it?
No, it's it's not quite, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Oh, go ahead, you you get the question, go ahead.
That's a great question, it's not really a one one point one percent. You can't look at it that way. You know how people look at the Dow Jones Industrial and so forth as a barometer of the stock market, even though it's only thirty stocks. What we look at is the ten year treasury rate and the ten year treasury rate is about a one point five five percent. That's about where it was about the time the pandemic, actually, it was a little bit higher than that, in February, it was probably about one point eight, one point nine percent. During the low, it got down to point five percent, so now we're at one point five five. I honestly, I think you'd have to have three to four percent. On the tenure for it to really dig into your savings, because again, you have so. Much, I've never seen anybody above twenty percent, I think the highest I think I ever worked on was seventeen percent, so. It would take a significant move in interest rates and that would be the talk of the town. If not the whole country, that rates had moved up that's that fast, that significantly in a two month period.
Yeah, I mean, you guys are in the financial world, you guys, I mean, obviously, you guys. You know, keep your keep your finger on the polls to kind of have an idea if you can include, you know, you hear, you think rates might tick up or you there's usually like some. Whispering like, hey, we think of this happen, I mean, what are what are you hearing like, you know, on the street, so to speak, that in the next, you know, sixty or ninety days?
I'll just back it up a little bit, about a month ago, on the Delta College refinancing. Rates had gone from one and a quarter all the way to one and one one point seven five percent, it gone so quickly, so fast. Everybody a month ago was talking about a two percent rate and moving forward. And part of that, of course, is because of so much stimulus. That's that's. With the Federal Reserve and and additional monies being passed. With that, it seemed like there was a big pause, I'd say in the last two weeks where rates went down below one point six and they're probably about there now, they they may have gone down to one point five five percent. So. I I'm hesitant to say where rates are going, I would be surprised if in the next two months. They were to go above two and a quarter or two and a half percent, I I think that would be a gigantic move. And interest rates. I think what a lot of people are doing, from what I've read, is a lot of people are taking advantage of the lower interest of of the higher interest rates, obviously. And a lot of insurance companies have annuities that they have to match. That they have to pay out and so forth, so they're taking advantage of buying these yields at one point seven five percent, knowing that. In their mind, they would likely go down and they have. So I'm sorry, Mayor, that was a long way to give you my thoughts about it, those are my personal thoughts. I would be surprised if if rates went above two and a half percent in the next two months.
All right, well, thanks for your insight, I appreciate that. Does any other council members have a comment? I can't see everybody, but to speak of if you do, because I can't see, there we go. If if nobody does, do we have any public comment on this particular item, Tina?
No public comment.
And Rose, any hands raised online?
We have no hands raised online.
Okay, looks like no additional comment. So that concludes the presentation. Thank you, Claire. Thank you, Mr. Fama and. And I'm looking for the other, and how do you say your name again? I'm sorry, Albert?
Yeah, Peshay. It's, yeah, it's P E S H A Y, it sounds like.
All right. Well, thank you again for answering our question.
Absolutely. My pleasure.
All right. Well, then further, without further ado, then I will be looking for. Somebody to move a motion to adopt a resolution approving the issuance of refunding bonds. Approving the execution and delivery of an indenture of trust relating thereto and providing. For other matters properly relating to, properly relating thereto. Do I have a motion?
I moved.
Moved by Councilmember Lozano. And.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Papinow. Have a roll call vote, please.
Board Member Sandu?
Hi.
Board Member Papinow?
Hi.
Board Member Vandenberg?
Hi.
Board Member Lozano?
Hi.
Board Member Farmer?
Hi. Motion passes. Fine. I apologize. I was supposed to be addressing everybody as board member. I forgot. So. My apologies on the protocol. All right. Well, thank you for your presentations, gentlemen, and Ms. Tyson. We will now adjourn to adjourn the Galt Successor Agency and reconvene to the Galt City Council. And with that, we will move on to item. L, which is our city clerk's report.
Nothing this evening.
All right. Move on now to item M, comments by staff. Mr. Heinz?
Yes, good evening. I would like to share my screen here. I wanted to. Can everyone see that? I wanted to announce that we're going to start first Thursdays with the city manager. So basically, it's every first Thursday of the month, I will have open office hours from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. And to any members of the public who want to come in and talk with me about any city operations. Any projects that we're working on. This will allow a direct dialogue with, with me and allow folks to. You know, get information from me and also allow me to. Get input from the citizens about city operations and our needs. So I wanted to make the public aware of this, wanted to make the council aware of this. Again, we're going to start with the first Thursday in, in May. And again, we picked 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Because those are the, generally the times for folks who are working all day. We, it's our hope that they'll be home sometime between 5:00 and 7:00. We've, we've allocated 20 minutes slots. So folks can just, you've got 20 minutes to. You know, tell me what's on your mind and ask any questions. We kept it at 20 minutes because we anticipated a high demand and we're trying to get in as many folks as we can. Per session, so I can hear from as much, much of our, much of our citizens as, as possible. So I wanted to make council aware of that. The other thing I wanted to make council aware of is that. We're continuing our outreach effort regarding the Galt Master Plan, the Galt Market Master Plan. We briefed the Youth Commission, we briefed the Beautification Committee, we briefed the Sunrise Rotary, we briefed the Commission on Aging. We've also, I'm sorry, we'll be briefing the Commission on Aging and the Planning Commission on Thursday. That's this Thursday. So if there's any members of the public who haven't seen the presentation. Who've missed the, the presentation on April 6th. You're welcome to tune in on Thursday to the Commission on Aging meeting and the Planning Commission meeting. And see the presentation for yourself. Economic Development Manager Mendez will also have some updates on the Galt Master Plan outreach effort as well. So I wanted to make sure I got that word out there and council members, I would. Encourage you to, if you've got constituents or citizens who want to talk with me directly to clear up any. Questions or if there's any chatter on social media that needs clarification, that's why we're here. And so I appreciate the time, Mr. Mayor, and let's go to. Finance Director Claire Tyson and see if there's anything there.
Nothing further for me to report. I just want to thank the council for their support of the refunding. Great benefit to our city and to our local agencies. Thank you.
Very good. Let's go to Interim Police Chief Brian Kalanowski.
Good evening, Council. Significant events the last two weeks. I don't have anything to report on the criminal side. The mayor mentioned our swearing-in ceremony last Thursday. And I appreciate the participation by staff, our department heads that were there and the folks that could make it. It was a little warm, but it was, it was a great event. And then lastly, this is my last council meeting as your interim chief. I will go back and. Move into the position of Lieutenant. I will be taking over the Operations Division, allowing. Lieutenant Small to do the interim chief role. So I won't be far away. You're in good hands with, with Rick. He's a good man and. He's, he's well, he's well versed in the operations and I think you'll be well served by him. I wish you all the best in your continued terms and here to support in any way I need to going forward and I wish you all the best. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Public Works Director Mike Selling?
Yeah, thank you, City Manager. Just a couple of quick things I wanted to note, I think all except for one of the, the new. Great American Little Town banners are up around town. So hopefully if you haven't seen them, you'll. Get an opportunity to see them. They look great. And anyway, I think once we get that last one. Will be there for a while. So. And then there. The other thing I wanted to mention, I guess, is we're getting into the warmer weather time of year. We got a letter from the state Department of Water Resources, probably a couple of weeks ago now. Snowpacks are, you know, only about maybe two thirds of what they've been for the last couple of years. So just wanted to. You know, get the heads up and remind folks to try to do some water conservation wherever you can. And then, yeah, I just wanted to thank Councilmember Lozano for his comments earlier on. The Secod Grants and we'll look forward to getting going on those projects too. Thank you.
Very good. Economic Development Manager Amy Mendez?
Good evening. As the city manager mentioned, in regards to the Galt Market Community Plan. We did update on the front page of the website. There is a button in the middle of the page that is the Galt Market Community Plan. Page connected from the front page. And when you go to the webpage, we've updated it with the new presentation. That was provided to City Council on April 6th. It also links to the video from the City Council meeting as well as the staff report. And then all the historic documents are there as well. And then we provided kind of a brief synopsis of the. Latest kind of information on the Galt Market Community Plan. So we'll start pushing that link out to the community. Starting tomorrow. Just wanted to give everybody an update on that. And. I think that is what we have for this evening. As the city manager mentioned, we have the Beautification Committee and, or the Commission on Aging, excuse me, and. The Planning Commission on Thursday for the Galt Market Community Plan. So. Those are the next two groups that we'll be reaching out to and we'll continue to push it out to the community. And I know Councilmember Lozano mentioned. You know, kind of community outreach in addition to the commissions and committees. And so. We had discussed some community forums that we've been talking about internally. So. That is more to come, coming into the next couple of weeks. So. That's it. Oh, you know what? Actually, just a heads up really quick. I wanted to give council and the community sort of a heads up. We've had a little. Technical difficulty with our Facebook page and we haven't been able to. Well, we've been able to post, but it's been coming from Instagram. So it's. Had some glitches that we're working through right now. And so we haven't been able to comment on any comments that come from the community. I haven't been able to share anything coming from the Galt Market or from the Galt Police Department. So. We're hoping to have that resolved within the next, you know, hopefully a couple of weeks. But. If it looks like there's not a ton of activity or communication on the Facebook page, that's why. I can't call anybody at Facebook. I've tried to email everybody and. We've done some outreach with our IT folks and so we're working through it right now, but just wanted to give everybody a heads up that. We're having to cross post from Instagram. So that's the hangup right now.
Did you get us put into Facebook jail, Amy?
I did something. I don't know what it is. I still haven't been able to figure it out. They've blocked us from getting in there. So it's been kind of a nightmare. We're working through it though, and hopefully within the next couple of weeks, we'll have that up and running. We have been able to post. It's just having to go through Instagram, which is kind of a pain. So. Yeah, if you notice anything kind of funky, that's where it's coming from. That's it. Unless anybody has any questions?
Thank you.
All righty. Thank you so much. Human Resources Director Stephanie Van Steen.
Yes, good evening. I just thought I would highlight some of our recruitments that we're working on. So anyone that's interested, or if you know someone that's qualified. Please have them visit our HR website. We've reopened our IT manager position and the closing date on that is going to be May 7th. We've got an Assistant Engineer slash Associate Civil Engineer position posted in our Public Works Department. We're looking to fill only one position, whether it's at the entry level or the more advanced level for that. We also have our Code Compliance Officer position that's been open in our Community Development Department. And that position closes in about a week. And we, of course, have our police officer job openings. We have the police dispatcher position posted again. We have a couple of recreation worker, part-time temporary positions in the Parks and Recreation Department. And then we also still have our janitorial position, which is a temporary position. Posted in our Public Works Department. So. Again, if you know of anyone or anyone listening this evening, if you're interested, please visit our website. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Community Development Director Craig Hoffman?
All right, council members. Also on Thursday, we, besides the Galt Market Plan that we'll start off with at 6 o'clock. We're also going to be hearing the draft housing element. And so it's an opportunity to see that document and we will be trying to get that to the council early. It's going to be on your agenda on May 4th. So we want to give you some time with that document. It is the draft. So. That's, I think, the big item coming up. Thank you and have a great night.
Thank you. Parks Rec Director Armando Solis?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Parks Rec, we're really busy now. We went from doing nothing with this COVID shutdown to. Seems that the county is opening more and more as we move along. We were just approved to have our swim team go. Our aquatic center open for the public by the county. We're fully into T-ball. The county has approved some modified tournaments at the sports complex. We will be doing the vaccines this weekend, plus all next week with CSD. And for our parks, guys, the, the parks have, we're in growing season. We're still trying to keep up. We're still mowing the, the parks twice a month. And the landscaping once a month. The guys are doing a great job. And then I wanted to make you aware that as requested by council. We are doing an RFP. For landscape services to compare to our in-house as requested. So that is currently out to bid. If you see that. That is for comparison and then a decision to be made during our budget process. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
No, I think that's, thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. A City Clerk Tina Hubert?
Nothing this evening.
City Attorney Harriet Steiner?
I also have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Admin Assistant Rose Rodacker?
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
All right. I have just one final thing to say on the first Thursdays. We're currently using the Zoom format as, starting our first Thursdays. As the county and the state and the country opens up, those Zoom meetings will turn into in-person meetings as time goes on. Or we'll give the user the option of doing it via Zoom or doing it in person. So I just wanted to mention that. Mr. Mayor, that concludes staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Heinz. We will now move on to comments by City Councilmember, future agenda items. We'll start with our Vice Mayor, Mr. Sandu.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very brief. First of all, I would like to thank you, Mr. Heinz, and all your staff. Doing a good job, bringing us a good report, very clear report. Thank you. And I also like to thank you with the public comment. Especially, I like to thank you, Jerry Sauter. Every meeting he come to and spend his time, but he's speaking on behalf of the city. So I really like to thank you. Jerry Sauter, Rosalvan, thank you tonight for give your comments. And thank you, Ralph Cortez. He make a comment tonight and this is my concern. And I also like to thank you. Galt Police Association, Michael Lera. Thank you, Mike. You give us a statement. Thank you. Thank you. And I also, I also attended the sworn in ceremony. Last week. Welcome and congratulations to the new officer and the dispatcher. And I also like to thank you, Brian Kalanowski. This event was very good event after a long time. And I also like to thank you, Mr. Brian. For your last six month as an interim chief. Good job. Thank you. And nothing further. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Papinow?
Director Solis mentioned it's growing season and they're working hard to keep up. Just to pass along a few grocery store comments that they're, they're doing a good job. People are, are happy with the way things are looking. And thank you, Chief, for the last six months. And thank you all for the reports tonight. That'll be it.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Vandenberg?
Thank you, Mayor. I also attended the swearing-in. It was a. Great pleasure to not only see four people, you know, dedicate their lives in that field, but it was. Really nice to see a graduate of Galt High come back and serve in Galt to help, you know, serve their community. That's, that's a real blessing. I really like that. Thank you, Chief Kalanowski, for your, the past six months. I appreciate all the efforts that you put in. And your diligence. Two other things, I'd like to see a vote to open up either Walker Park and/or Veterans Field. We're having T-ball, but the, you know, we still have some of our parks closed. So I'd like to see a vote on that. And then I'd also like to. Visit our city code on. Elections. When I, when I ran, there's. Several items I felt were. Unnecessary, you know, we're filling out 460 forms that the FPPC doesn't even want. And then we're filling them, you know. One on top of the other at the end of the. Election cycle, one strictly for the city of Galt. I don't really feel like it's necessary.
Well, Jay, if you wanted to reach out to Mr. Heinz with those. Concerns and then I don't know, Mr. Heinz, you want to go and get the, get the consensus of the council on some of these things? What are your thoughts?
I'll, I'll, I'll be happy to chat with Councilmember Vandenberg about these issues. I believe him and I have a meeting scheduled for Thursday.
Okay. Just, just for the record, I have had people ask about the parks, the veterans, the veteran soccer field as well. So I would, I would support looking into that, just, just for the record. So. Does that conclude? You have other comments, Jay? Is that it?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Lozano?
Yeah, I would also say, I've already, I've spoken with the City Manager Heinz about Walker Park. And/or Veterans Field. I think maybe we all got the same email from, from a citizen. But anyhow, so I know that they're working hard on that, the city manager and Armando Solis. So appreciate that. Assistant, or I'm sorry, Interim Chief Kalanowski, thank you for your time. As interim chief, you've done, from my perspective, which I guess really kind of doesn't matter because I don't hire you, but. I think you've done an awesome job. Certainly. The feedback that I get, kind of grocery store stuff is, is that, you know, the, the troop's pretty happy. And so. You know, the, the, the troop's pretty happy and so uh, it, it's great to have more, uh, you know, uh, good morale in the department. I think you've, uh, your leadership has brought that, so. Uh, and again, not that it wasn't, the morale wasn't high before. But I think you've really done, done a good job in that area, so. Um, that is pretty much all I have. I uh, thank you to the staff for the, the thorough reports and I want to thank the city manager and, and all the staff members, really. For taking my ongoing questions that I have on these staff reports. Um, and, and really taking the time to answer those and, you know, uh, ahead of the meeting. Um, and I know it's a lot of work for you, uh, especially when we get a packed calendar, but uh, it really helps me. And uh, really helps me get back to the community, uh, the citizens that ask uh, ahead of time, so. Uh, anyhow, thank you very much and have a great evening, everyone.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember. Uh, for me, uh, just a few things, just um. Uh, I want to tell the citizens to keep an eye on social media for information about the vaccination event coming up this weekend that uh, is to be announced. Uh, I will try to share whatever's posted onto my pages. Uh, there's a, we're starting to see more events now that, uh, you know, the COVID restrictions are starting to loosen up. So one would be the, we have a drug take-back event at Galt PD the Saturday, twenty-fourth from ten to two. If you have prescription drugs, they will be taking those at Galt PD, get them, getting them off the uh, street. Again, that's between ten and two PM, Galt PD, this, this Saturday, the twenty-fourth. Uh, also have uh, the Historical Society putting out the tea at the Ray House, which is always a good event. That's May eighth. Uh, galthistory.org is that webpage. You can, more information on that. There's also a special uh, Galt Public Safety meeting coming up on April twenty-sixth. That is uh, going to be talking about some traffic concerns. If you want to tune to that. Um, and also too, want to re-echo the uh, the Vice Mayor's uh, sentiment to the people that uh, commented. Uh, you know, it is hard to get people's participation and I applaud those that, that do comment and Mr. Soder, thank you very much for your um. You know, your very kind remarks earlier about my uh, Facebook podcast thing. Uh, that was um. And, and thank you for all the people that wrote in with comments for that. That was, I had with some, a lot of questions. So we were tough. I had to lean on staff for that, uh, you know, I had to get some answers last minute from staff, but I think it was very well and, and people were very happy to get answers. So um, um, but last but not least, um, I want to say uh, thank you to the chief. Um, Kalanowski for his job over the last six months. I too heard the same thing that uh, Councilmember Lozano mentioned. From the actual officers that uh, morale has been very high. Um, I think it was the exact words were from the person that told me. That's been the highest it's seen in a long time, so. You should uh, pat yourself on the back. I think you did a good job and uh, I appreciate you uh, you know, stepping up in that role. I know it's not easy with all the politics and having to come to ma- meetings like this and listen to all the council members blab, so you're, you're free of that for a while. And uh, other than that, I just want to again, yeah, thank you all the staff for um, your reports tonight. And um, for uh, clarifying some issues that we had concerns about, about the one uh, agenda item, Mr. Selling and Mr. Clarkson. And um, I think that's all I have, so everybody have uh, a good remaining week and we will adjourn the meeting eight fifty-five PM. Good night.
Good night.